Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm going to call our open session to order. It is 6:02 and it is Thursday, November 19. I just want to reread by executive order N 2920 issued on March 18, 2020. LBSD board meetings will be closed to the public. Opportunities for public comment are live via our Zoom meeting, or maybe submitted prior to the meeting via electronic submissions, and those were already given to all board members. We've already done our roll call in our initial opening, and we just are going to stand up for the pledge of allegiance. I, of course, am near the flag, so everyone, please stand. Put your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. So a report on closed session, we have no report out for today's closed session, and I do need to read another report out. On October 28, 2020, the board held a special closed session meeting to discuss existing litigation case number 819 CV 02381-DOCJDEX, De Perry versus Jason Valoria, Jan Vickers, Peggy Wolf, Carol Normandin, and James Kelly. The report out from that meeting is there was no action taken. And then again, there was no report out for tonight's closed session. I need a motion to, oh, I do want to note to people watching that Zoom has been having issues in our area. It is not the district, but in case anything happens, we do know that Zoom has been having a few bit of issues. So heads up on that. And then a motion to adopt the agenda. Oh, are there any changes to the agenda? Slow down, Peggy.
No.
Okay, thanks. Sorry, just reading away. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda, please? Second. Board member Kelly, board member Norman, and roll call to adopt the agenda.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Perry? Yes. Member Vickers?
Yes.
Clerk Normandin?
Yes.
President Wolf?
Yes. Motion carries 5-0, and I forgot to ask my student board reps. Number one, welcome. Soren and Johanna, who will be doing the voting tonight?
I will. So, yes.
Okay, so sorry. Thank you, Soren. Sorry, I'll get the flow. So we did that. We have no recognitions. We're now at public comment on non-agenda items. And in order to go onto the Zoom, you will need to raise your hand. You are limited to three minutes. And Dr. Winston will be monitoring if hands are raised for non-agenda items. Please raise your hand now, you will be brought into the meeting. There are no hands raised. Okay, I'm going to close the public comment on non-agenda items. And now we're going to go to our reports. And our first report is our student board reps. And what order would you two like to go in?
Sorry, you can go if you want.
Okay, so Soren, why don't you lead us off, and then Johanna can close stuff.
Okay, so Johanna is going to be talking about the updates from the schools. And I'll be giving more general overview as well as talking about what we, Johanna and I have been doing. So given the recent updates from the reopening, Johanna and I were reaching out to social media students, and we were creating platform there as my students were, parents were a little emotional about the events. And we talked with students, and we got feedback. And overall, it seems a lot of students are obviously disappointed. But, you know, we're looking forward for ways that we can, you know, we still find those connections. And some of the ways is working with ASP president Izzy Saunders, and we're hoping to establish social distancing, kind of informal hangout sessions that students who need those connections can participate in social distance, of course. And we think that's a great way that we could have some semblance of interpersonal relationships. They're so vital at this time. So that's all from me. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you, Soren. Johanna? Johanna, your login says Soren Tippel on it. Can someone change your name on it, in case someone's watching?
Yeah, I didn't, I forgot the link, so.
Okay.
I'll do it.
Victoria can change it for you. Sorry, go ahead.
Okay, I'll just do, I'm just going to do a quick update on all the schools. So TOW, their second trimester starts on Monday. And they've been really accommodating for students who want to switch from hybrid to online or the other way around. And they've been recognizing about 20 students a week for their PBIS traits. And they just finished out their canned food drive. With El Moro, they've been holding virtual assemblies for both the four-day in-person students and the virtual academy students. And also, I'd just like to say congrats to Ava Ferguson-Gerud. She won the Booblast Art Contest. And then they finished out their first trimester on November 13. Thurston has been working really hard for their phase two, but unfortunately, it is going to have to be put on hold. But they're still working with teachers and students on the new technology. And they've been really trying to involve students who do need more support, creating more, like, group support systems, especially for the special education and English learner students. And then high school, sort of the same thing while we're wrapping up the first trimester. And we won't be going back Monday, but we'll continue to work on new technology and support groups as well. Thank you.
Is it okay if I add something?
Sure, of course, Soren. Go ahead.
I thought I was, but speaking to all the parents and maybe students that are present, another great way to have, to form those, form like, or try to form these connections besides these social distancing hangout sessions, which we will be hosting shortly, is the mentorship initiative, which is having its first informational session on December 1. So you will be finding the Zoom link for that in the parent's script shortly. So if you or your students would like to be part of that, it's a great way for students to have connections during this trying time. So I highly encourage any parents or students to participate in that program. It's a really good way for us to have these connections that are missing. And a major part of, I think, many parents are upset about not being able to have their students go back to school. Thank you.
Thank you, Soren, and thank you, Johanna, for your report. And now our bargaining units, and I'm going to start with Sarah Hopper from La Booth. You're muted.
Here we go. Okay, both elementary and secondary teachers have been busy wrapping up the first trimester and preparing for the second. Secondary teachers and counselors are finishing up writing letters of recommendation for their senior students to add to their college applications. At this point, they've written probably over 300 letters. Oops, I lost my pointer here. Okay, sorry. Since October 5, our elementary teachers have been teaching in person, striving to provide a rigorous curriculum within their classrooms and engaging activities on the encore days for their students. With the beginning of the new trimester, the sudden and unfortunate news that the secondary schools would not be able to open due to a change in the timelines of the purple tier restrictions elicited many emotions amongst the teachers. And despite all of this, the secondary teachers have been on campus, readying their classrooms, working with their cohort teaching partner, and training on the new technology and cameras that will be used when they return to in-person instruction. The secondary teachers look forward to the time when they can greet their students in person. I also would like to really thank Ryan Zeta and the facilities maintenance team for their continued diligence in providing health and safety measures. The teachers recognize and appreciate the ongoing commitment that the maintenance staff and the maintenance staff has accomplished in keeping all employees and students safe. If they say the plan was to start off and clean bathrooms five times a day, they are still cleaning bathrooms five times a day. And we really appreciate just the ongoing diligence of what the maintenance staff has continued to do and provide for us. And I also want to say, in my president's meetings, when I meet with CTA and other presidents from other districts, LBUSD meets the highest standards in all categories issued by the health officials. CTA has given us an A-plus rating on our safety standards, and that is a testament to Dr. Valoria and the cabinet in committing resources to create this high standard of safety and care for our students and staff. So we really appreciate all that has been done and, and what has been done. And it's working. So we have, you know, so we know that that's been a benefit to all of us. In conclusion, and on behalf of La Booth and our members, I would like to congratulate you, Dr. Winston, on your new position and wish you all the best in your future endeavor. We will be sad to lose you, but wish you luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. I appreciate that report. And our next one is CSCE with Margaret Water, please.
Yes, good evening. Well, certainly, we wish best to Ms. Winston or Dr. Winston as she moves into her next path in her journey. Certainly, we have appreciated her collaborative relationship in working with our associations and with the entire district. We've really moved to a new level as we went to interest-based bargaining and things that she has introduced, the Leadership Academy. It has just been a pleasure in working with her. And I am also personally very sad to see her move on, but at the same time, extremely happy for, as I said, her next steps. As Sarah pointed out, this has been a week of transition. You know, back to ready, set, and maybe not go. So that's what happened. And lots of conversations with staff members, with not only teachers, but our classified staff, wondering what was happening. This whole transition has required numerous commitment from our administration and our site administrators as we move forward. And also with the directors as we move, especially our classified staff, to be more facilitating to other schools. And with that said, I'd like to say that a big shout out to Thurston's classified staff and the high school's classified staff, especially campus supervisors that have gone to the other sites and helped the elementary sites. And we were kind of grieving a little that they were going to be leaving us to go to, you know, back to their site, especially at TOW. So we're glad to have nutrition stay and the campus supervisors, but certainly, we wanted schools to open. With that, you know, we look at tonight's state stay-at-home from the governor. It is a major concern that we're moving around this Thanksgiving weekend. So what I personally, from CSCE and everyone that I work with and care about, is that we all stay safe over the next holiday, this holiday season, so that the next time we come to the board meeting, we're all here and healthy and moving forward for our students and our district. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Margaret, for that report. I will now go to board members' reports. Dr. Kelly, your report? He's trying to unmute, I can tell.
Can you hear me?
There you go.
Great. I'm going to congratulate Dr. Winston also and make the statement that it's a real testimony that another school district wants our employees. That shows what a great job they did for us. So I know that you will do a great job in Huntington Beach. I also want to congratulate the newly elected board members. I think that I'm looking forward to working with them. I have been working with the Orange County Educational Board on their upcoming election and cast the ballot for the school district. I've also been observing the COVID testing going on in the parking lot. And I'm just so impressed with our staff who have overseen this and done such an excellent job on testing the 300-plus students. I just wish that all the parents would have all of the students tested. It's a voluntary activity, but I think it's a very important activity for all students for the testing. And I have on kind of, we've been talking with numerous parents and students about getting the secondary students back to school. And I'm disappointed in what has happened in Orange County. But the, the numbers are going up so drastically throughout the country. And for the next six weeks, it's just going to be very important for everyone to say, safe, use your face mask, and to enjoy Thanksgiving in a very safe way. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Um, Victoria, can we make, is the chat supposed to be open on our panel?
No, let me see if I can close that.
Okay, thanks. Okay, our next report, so sorry, everybody, is board member Perry, your report, please.
Okay, I, you know, everything's basically virtual. I watched the department, Orange County Department of Education Teacher of the Year, and it was fun. You got to see everybody, but also concentrating on the ones that won from our county. And I saw the photo in the paper, and I'm so glad you were able to surprise Mrs. Wong. I attended the Understanding Implicit Bias in the Context of Social-Emotional Learning put on by Panorama Education, San Diego Office of Education. And it was very interesting. They had a, they had a pretty cool survey and a panel. And I also attended the Youth Radicalization in Times of Crisis webinar. And that was also very interesting as far as how on the internet now with students feeling more isolated, they're much more targeted for some of these groups. And then another one was, another SEL one was on, like, Dr. Valoria had mentioned the enrichment classes and how key those are to children's learning and well-being, that this is where children find their sustenance for their passions and their interests and their social-emotional development. And they talk about how much wealthy families spend for this, that other families can't. But for a student, say, that's struggling in math, and then maybe they excel in painting and drawing, then they start building up their confidence, and they're more accepted by other students. And so it helps their whole social-emotional development. But not only that, it really improves their grades in other subjects as well. And then I, well, it was fun. I've talked to students in my neighborhood that go to El Moro, and three of them were very excited today about the Character Counts Assembly. We're all hoping that they, they were chosen for having good citizenship. But they also talked about just how happy they are to be back at school and grateful. That's it.
Thank you, board member Perry. Board member Vickers, your report, please.
Yes, I attended the PTA council meeting, and all the PTA presidents shared how hard they're working to support parents and to connect parents. And sometimes the, getting the groups together, but reaching out to parents and meeting that need. And it was really, really good to hear that. They're working on their membership. They're working on their fundraisers, but it's all very, very different. But their, their main concern is connecting. And then the high school PTA meeting, I attended that. And they had two speakers for the parents, Pam Estes from the Boys and Girls Club, and now it's Sergeant Ashton from, and he's, they gave excellent reports. I really hope that any parents who weren't there would be able to avail themselves of the information. It was talking about how much support that they're providing and also the needs for the support for parents and for the students. And it was something really not to be missed. They really went to an exceptional level for the information that they provided. And Sergeant Ashton did talk about how it's changed over the months and how much of a role he's been playing in helping students in their, when they're home more, particularly older students, and it's changed the family dynamic. And so he has been very, very engaged in helping families throughout the community. The JFMC meeting, I'll share that report with you, Peggy, because you also attended that. But I want to emphasize the property tax report was terrific and really provided, that's a very complicated system. And so it really made it clear how it works and how it functions and how we end up with our 25-point percent that comes to our school district. And then, but all that goes into how those property taxes are ascertained by the county and who, there's three people who oversee. It's a complicated system, but it was an excellent report and really validates our engaging that company for Mr. Dixon to do property tax forecasting, which is required of us to do for three years out at least. But we'd like to look longer than that. It's a very difficult forecasting to make. The, let's see, I wanted to also give a commendation to Dr. Winston. I think it's about seven years that she's been in a leadership position in our district and has been an exceptional leader for us. In my experience, I think she's the third assistant superintendent, although she has a deputy assistant title now, that have gone on from our district to become a superintendent in another district. And this is the first one with Dr. Valoria, but it is a reflection on the mentorship that is provided by a superintendent so that people can grow and develop those leadership capabilities to take on that top-level position. And so I think it's, it does, as Dr. Kelly mentioned, it does speak well for our district. And I'm very, very pleased and excited for Dr. Winston. Then I also, I don't know if we're making our comments now for President Wolf, but I just, I don't know when we're doing that. I know I didn't get that, that information. But I just want to say that it's been really a pleasure to work with you. You're very, very thorough and very knowledgeable and very efficient in everything that you do. And you're always prepared. But what really I want to highlight is your continual recognition of following protocols that we've all agreed to and the fact that board is a majority ruling body, that it is not done by individual board members. It is done by discussion, research, preparation, and then we end up with a direction. And you have emphasized that continually because that's a concept that I don't think is really broadly understood. So I wanted to recognize those qualities among many. Thank you.
Thank you, board member Vickers. That's very kind. Board member Normandin, your report, please.
Yes, Jan, one was that meeting taped, the PTA meeting that you said we shouldn't, we should all hear?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
As a dating, as a date. Yes, Jimmy. I don't know what he did with that. Thank you.
Okay, I'll find out. It sounds wonderful. I did want to make it clear that we do receive public comment beforehand. It's written as well as emails to all of us and that we have all shared that we all appreciate all of the public comment and all of the input from students and parents and teachers and everyone else who wants to comment. So I just wanted to make sure that I mentioned that. And then I do also want to congratulate the re-elected and newly-elected board members on their, on their win in the election. And then it's hard to tell when we're on CSBA webinars if everyone is on it, because a lot of times we can't see who else is there unless we break out into small groups. But I've been, I've been attending so many of them because it's a lot easier to attend them now. But I did want to mention to my fellow members that, one, they have a YouTube channel where they put a lot of videos on there that you can watch some of the pieces, the webinar, they take the, now that I know it, I'm not sure how many I'll actually attend, but they take like a three-hour webinar and turn it into a 20-minute video of the content. And they're great. They're really great and helpful. And then, of course, they have their website that has lots of information. But I want to make sure I share that because I don't know if you guys are there or not. And they wouldn't put us, even if they did break out, they won't put us in the same group anyways because we're in the same district. So I don't want to share that. And then the one constant in attending those is that if, I know we as a district are talking about it. I know that Dr. Keller's and, and, well, every employee is focused on mental health, both for our students and families. I want to just make sure, though, that everyone's checking in on each other, that we're all, all the employees are checking in with their fellow employees just to make sure they're doing okay. Because that seemed to be what was left out in a lot of the CSBA was really the employees' mental health. And today, that's what, one of the webinars I attended was really all about. It was just the simple, since you don't always get to see each other, that you're just checking in with each other. Everybody's, yeah, both the kindness. And I'm, and I know that we're all close-knit and smaller than most of the people attending that. But, but they're talking about gratitude, kindness, and any routines that you can create that were similar go a long way and keep us in the present moment. So. Next, I, I know this isn't your last meeting, Lisa, but I am so proud of you. And Huntington Beach is so lucky to have you. And you're going to make an amazing superintendent. You will be leaving a void. There'll be hard to fill with just one person because you have such a can-do attitude, and you just take on more and more and do it with ease. And you have inspired me personally with your energy, your integrity, your civility, your quest to connect people, to make LBSD better than it was the day before. It's just such a, it's inspirational. So thank you for all the years. You were here when I first got here, and you have been paramount in my role. So thank you. And then lastly, I want to really acknowledge Peggy and her last four years of service on the board with all of us. I think Jan really hit it on the head of majority, right, it's majority board, and that we all work together. And when we work together, we actually, we're healthier. We're a better board for this great district. So, but your dependability, how supportive you are, how impressively organized you are, it's beyond anything I've seen. I can be a lawyer. Your skills of running a meeting. You're also going to leave a void behind. I don't know if, if any of us can run it the way you do. So you, you inspired us. And then this year, this year with all the personal attacks, I just want, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm going to start to cry, so let's stop.
Yeah, I got you. You're going to make me cry. Thanks.
Okay.
It's been a tough go. But thank you. That's really kind.
And Jason has a token, a token from all of us. Yeah, so.
Yay. Thank you.
Alone in my room.
Thank you. Is that the rest of your report? I still have to do the business of the meeting. So is it?
Yes, yeah, go do the business of the meeting.
Thank you. Okay, now I'll just give my report. Number one, thank you for your kind words. I attended the Joint Fiscal Management Committee as well, that meeting. Paula Kohn of Corin and Kohn did share information on the property tax and analysis of our projected property tax, which is, it's a complicated system, as board member Vickers said, but it's really informative, and it's impressive how our business office manages it. Our district is in strong financial shape. Our property tax seems to be estimated to be increasing and staying strong, although we'll see 18 months out from COVID. The forecast was really helpful, and I was glad to be part of the meeting, Jeff, and watch you in action. It was really great. I also wanted to congratulate Dr. Winston. When she interviewed, I was a parent representative on the interview panel. I remember it very clearly. I was a PTA president at one of the school sites. And I remember being impressed with her in the interview. That's all I can say, how great she was. And it's really, we will miss you, but I congratulate you on professional challenges you're taking on. And I'm so proud that you have learned here, and we've benefited from all your experience because I can always count on you for really great information, and you are a strong advocate of education, and I'm grateful. I also just want to say to the parents and people online that I personally am sad and disappointed that our secondary schools are not able to reopen on Monday. The change in rules was swift and fast. One hour we were opening, and within one hour, we were not. The board did support opening at the trimester break, and we do not have the ability to have a crystal ball and see. The board did support opening at the trimester break and we do not have the ability to have a crystal ball and see what was coming up ahead of us. I think all our plans were in place. We have some of the strongest, safest plans with our cohorts. I'm sorry for the disappointment felt by all the families. For those of you that may not know, I have a senior at home and so we too feel it. Sorry, I'm getting emotional. But I just think that as a collective, if this county does not change its behavior. And we make some protocol changes, we won't be able to reopen. We need the citizenry of Orange County to help us. And to bring down our transmission rates. Um, and so I just hope we can all commit to that. I know I want to be part of the solution, not the problem on this. But I hope the parents know that. We didn't do this on purpose. This wasn't our goal. We couldn't read the tea leaves. We, we want our kids to go back to school. We want our kids to go back to school, but this is what's happening right now in Orange, Orange County and nationwide. So I apologize for getting choked up. It's been a, it's been a long year. So, um, I think we're all doing the best we can right now. So that's the end of my report and I'll now I'll go to. Uh, Dr. Valoria for his report.
Thank you. Uh, yes, I think, uh, just to kind of piggyback on the comments you made. Very surprised and taken aback, uh, Monday when we received news that, uh, the entire framework as we knew it. Was going to be changed and, um, there was no warning on Friday of last week. In conversation with Orange County Healthcare Agency, we were on, on track to be reopening. Even if we went had gone into purple on Tuesday, just because of the way the framework worked, we would have been able to reopen on Monday. Again, those changes are things that unfortunately. You know, I don't have a lot of power over. I do want to thank, uh, you know, the board for their continued support, uh, as we kind of navigate, uh, these uncharted waters. And for supporting our student testing, which we, we wrapped up, um, another round of that. And, um, you know, and it's, uh, one of those things that we, um, you know. Always want to be as proactive as you can. So again, appreciate the board for doing that. I think we're one of the very few districts in Orange County that are actually doing student testing. As it, we look to reopen, uh, my initial, uh, conversations with the Orange County Healthcare Agency on, on Monday. When this all happened via text and phone and email, uh, was, so when can we potentially reopen our school sites? And, um, they didn't have a, a timeline. Um, again, I think they were still sifting through the, the potential changes. But, uh, in speaking with, um, those in, in charge there, um, the earliest we could. Potential reopen based off of the current timelines. Again, I'm just so hesitant to say that, but, uh, because things seem to change and evolve. But, uh, as it stands right now, we would, um, more than likely be able to reopen if, if we move forward out of the different tiers. And move out of purple tier within three weeks, uh, into red tier. Again, that's all contingent on, on data. That, uh, we would be able to reopen, um, two weeks into red, which would put us some point in January. My belief is that, uh, the board action was to reopen its second trimester. So when it is safe to do so. Um, I, my assumption is we will, we will reopen. I don't have a date right now. Again, some of it, so much of it's predicated on the numbers. And our tier status as a county, and I think that's what, uh, Member Wolf was mentioning, um, that we're very much reliant on the county as a whole. But we're also, uh, mindful that as we have noticed, things have changed. Um, and maybe, um, you know, I'm hopeful that things will change for the better. Uh, and we'll be given an opportunity to potentially look to reopen before that. But right now, the data that I have and the numbers that I'm, I've been made aware of from the healthcare agency has been. At the earliest five weeks, which will put us, uh, in January. So, uh, again, we'll continue to update, uh, the community as we learn more. Just, uh, again, ashamed that, uh, uh, this change was made at this, at this time, but. Uh, I'd also, uh, like to comment on Dr. Winston. It's, uh, you know, losing a key member of the team has been, uh, fantastic. Um, and, and everything that she does. I know that Huntington Beach is, uh, going to really enjoy having her as a leader there. They're very lucky to have her, in my opinion, and, uh, as a leader and I. Probably will be one of the few that will get to see her fairly regularly, uh, once she does make that transition because regular superintendents meeting. So I, I truly look forward to those opportunities to be working hand in hand with Lisa as she takes on her, her next role. Um, in, in that district. Well deserved. I think we, we can all say that. So, uh, again, appreciation to all of you. I wish you all a happy Thanksgiving. And, uh, safe Thanksgiving, uh, with your immediate family, hopefully only. So.
Thank you, Dr. Valoria. Uh, Dr. Winston, you get to have a report here.
Thank you. I'll be brief. I just wanted to thank everyone for sharing their support. And I still have another meeting. I still have more work to do. So I'll, I'll save my, my thoughts for the next meeting. But I do want to comment, um, Board Member Wolf, thank you for your service as both a member and president of the board. And as you mentioned, a PTA partner when I first entered the district. It's been a pleasure and I've appreciated your leadership and your thoughtful questions and perspectives and I wish you the best.
Thank you. Thank you. And Mr. Dixon, you guys are getting me all misty.
I'll be brief. Echo briefly what Lisa just said. Thank you, President Wolf. It really has been a pleasure. I, I knew you as PTA. And then I really, um, appreciate Sarah. Thank you so much for acknowledging Ryan Zada and the entire facilities team. They have been working overtime. It's been a year like no one, no other. Everyone knows that. Um, and I'll make sure that they know, um, that it's being recognized. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Okay. We are now on to agenda item eight, which is public hearings. I gotta get my glasses on. So. Dr. Winston, do you want to go first? You want me to read, uh, the description first?
So these are the required public hearings. The first one is on the, the 2020 to 2023 collective bargaining agreement with LaBufta. This is the first time you're seeing that one. Uh, the next two are the required public hearings for. The revisions that were made to the bargaining agreements for classified employees and for management unrepresented.
Okay. So I'm going to.
And then you'll, you'll take action later.
Okay. So I want to go ahead and read though, all the details for the record. So, uh, eight A is public disclosure of collective bargaining agreement in accordance with A B 1200, chapter 12, 13. 1991 government code three, four, three, excuse me, three, five, four, seven, uh, point five and C C R title five, section one, five, four, four, nine. And the 2020, 2021 negotiated agreement with the Laguna Beach Unified Faculty Association called LaBufta. Um, I'm now opening the public hearing for comments. And so if you would like to comment, please raise your hand to be recognized. As one of the attendees. There are no hands raised. Okay. Thank you for checking. Okay. I will now, uh, there are no hands to be raised. I will close the hearing on this item. Our next item is eight B as in boy, public disclosure of amendment to the 2020, 2021 negotiated agreement. With the California School Employees Association, C S E A, and it's Laguna Beach chapter number 131 collective bargaining agreement. In accordance with A B 1200, chapter 1213, 1991, government code three, five, four, seven, point five. And C C R title five, section 15449. I will now open the public hearing for comments. This is the C S E A. Please raise your hand if you would like to comment on this item. I see no hands. Okay. There are no hands. So I will close the hearing on this, this item. I will now move to eight C. This is public disclosure of amendment to the 2020, 2021 compensation proposal. With non-represented classified and certificated employees in accordance with A B 1200. Chapter 1213, 1991, government code three, five, four, seven, point five and C C R title five. Section 15449. I will now open the public hearing for comments. Please raise your hand if you have a comment. There are no hands. Okay. Thank you. So no hands raised. So I will close the hearing on this item. Our next item is D and I will talk to Mr. Dixon first.
Thank you, President Wolf. This is, uh, the budget overview for parents, which will match all the budget reports that you've seen, including first interim. That will be presented later per Senate Bill 98. It's to be brought forth with the first interim report, which is an action item later for positive certification. And, um, we take public comments at this point.
Okay. So this is a budget overview for parents. Um, and this was attached to the agenda. I will now open the public hearing for comments. Please raise your hand if you would like to make a comment. There are no hands. Okay, there are no hands. So I will close the hearing on this item. We will now go to our consent, uh, calendar action. And consent parliamentary procedure provides for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. All matters listed under the consent calendar will be enacted by the board in one motion. The superintendent and the staff recommend approval and a ratification of all consent. Uh, any item may be removed from the consent, consent calendar. It's a tongue twister tonight. At the request of a board member enacted on separately. You can comment on consent. Is there any, uh, attendees that would like to have a public comment on consent? Please raise your hand. I don't see any hands. Okay, no hands. So I'm going to close the public comment of consent. Does any member wish to pull an item?
No.
I don't, I'm looking in all your boxes. I don't see anybody. Okay. Are there any board questions or comments? And remember, we are going to approve. D, wait, excuse me, C. Through W. Okay. A and B is part of the board docs process. Um, does anybody have any questions? Okay. I don't see any board members. I'm just double checking, looking at all your boxes. Okay. May I have a motion to approve? Uh, item C through W. Okay. So I got Board Member Vickers, I think first and Board Dr. Kelly for a second. May we have a roll call for approval, please?
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Clerk Normandin?
Yes.
President Wolf?
Yes. Motion carries our consent, uh, five O. Thank you very much.
Student provisional vote, please.
Sorin, student provisional vote. Sorin, did you say yes? Yes. Thanks, Sorin. Okay. I'm going to get it. I promise. Got a few more opportunities. Okay. So I'm moving on. Just a second, everybody. I have to get my laptop. To match what I'm doing over here. Okay, we're on item 10A and that's a monthly financial update and Mr. Dixon will present to us.
Yep. Thank you. Uh, not a lot of new information from the August monthly financial. It's everything that we'd expect through September. Uh, still have the favorable changes in revenue being higher than what was projected currently. And expenditures being lower than what was projected. The one thing that I would like to note. Is that because the expenditures are only through September, a lot of purchases and services that we did over summer. Those hadn't come out of our budget quite yet. So as we see the gap for expenditures close over the next few months, it'll be reflective of a lot of the work that we did. July through September. So, uh, happy to take any questions.
Any board members have questions on the monthly financial update? Okay, I don't see any. Okay, thank you. This is an information item and then, uh, we are on 10B, which is a report on developer fees.
We asked for public comment on that, Peggy.
Oh, I didn't, you know what? You're right. Victoria, I think, um, on my chart, I, cause I follow a little chart. So let me do that. Okay. Thank you for the reminder. So public comment on monthly financial update. If you'd like to comment, please raise your hand. Apologies.
I see none.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, uh, Board Member Norman. So now we have a report on developer fees and why don't I do public comment? That is 10B. Um, I'll do that first before I go to Mr. Dixon. Any public comment? Anybody raise their hand that's attending?
There's none.
Okay, thank you. So I'll close that. So Mr. Dixon, go ahead on report on developer fees.
This is an annual report on developer fees, also known for us as Fund 25. So it's outside of our general fund. There's a lot of information in the item itself, so I won't repeat it, but at the very highest level. Uh, we have had the same level one fee since 2001, which is half of the current level one fees allowable by the state of California. We collect roughly a hundred thousand dollars per year in developer fees. Uh, which helped to offset the construction costs related to our classroom improvements and construction. All of that money at this point is tied into the Thurston Middle School project. And obviously it's not nearly enough to cover the full cost of the project, but that is typical for what we'd expect with developer fee collection and payments. We happen to take any questions.
Any board member have questions or comments for Mr. Dixon? Okay, I see none. Okay, go ahead.
I just said, thank you for the report. It's very detailed.
Okay, our next item, we're going to 12A and that's a challenge success update. Um, and I think I hand that over to Dr. Allaman, Dr. Keller and Sorin Tippel.
Yes, thank you so much, President Wolf, esteemed members of the board, Dr. Valoria and, uh, community members. Tonight we're giving you an overview of the history and future of our partnership with Challenge Success from Stanford University. My name is Dr. Michael Keller. I'm the director of social emotional support and, uh, tonight I will be presidenting with. With, uh, Dr. Jason Allman, the Laguna Beach High School principal and Sorin Tippel, your very own student board representative. And your, he's also a challenge success stakeholder team member and a challenge success club member. Uh, next slide, please. So Challenge Success was founded, uh, 13 years ago and has served over 450 schools in the United States and internationally. The mission of Challenge Success is to partner with schools, families and communities to embrace a broad definition of success. That goes beyond the traditional view of academic achievement alone. And, and Challenge Success partners with schools, school teams to implement research-based practices. To support student well-being and engagement with learning. And now more than ever, uh, that's, those are critical aspects to embrace. Uh, Laguna Beach High School has been a challenge success school since 2018 through the present time. Uh, we've had stakeholder teams attend conferences, uh, to learn best practices. And to participate in ongoing coaching to guide implementation, uh, priorities that, and, and all that work continues to this day. The initial work was to identify symptoms of stress and root causes to identify research-based strategies to support change. And we'll be exploring ways that we made strategic shifts to improve student learning in a, in a later slide. In the current year, Thurston Middle School has joined, uh, Channel Success as a year one school. And we had a team of, uh, students and a parent and site administrators and school-based mental health staff and a, and a broad-based, uh, set of teachers. Representing Thurston. And, uh, and they attended the, the fall virtual conference. And this year we'll be collaborating together to work with a coach to work on priority climate initiatives. To improve the student experience and, and now more than ever, that work is, is critical. A really important aspect of the work of Challenge Success is the administration of student surveys. Uh, previously, uh, in 2018, we surveyed students and staff. And the, in the winter of this year, later in the winter, early spring, we'll be administering a student and staff survey for the first time. And we use that critical data to inform the work that we're doing. I would like to share with you one challenge success strategy called the I Wish Campaign. And where students share their perspectives on what they wish teachers and parents knew about their experiences. So it, it helps us as adults to reflect, to adjust our expectations. And to strengthen our relationships with students. And, and this is from a partner school district in the Challenge Success family. Could you please play the audio?
I wish teachers knew that on some days I can't handle any more work.
I wish my parents knew that school wasn't easier just because it was online.
I wish my parents knew how much I stress.
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 I'm not just dealing with academic and social stress. I'm dealing with family stress too.
I'm not just dealing with academic and social stress, I'm dealing with family stress too.
How stressful it was to be a student during COVID-19.
I wish my parents knew how sad it was to end my senior year so abruptly.
What it feels like to work your hardest for four years and not be able to enjoy the best part of high school.
How this pandemic has affected the sense of closure for many high school students.
I wish my parents knew that I could be sad for no reason.
I'm not trying to be lazy, I'm just lost.
I was scared of falling behind.
That every tear shed was in hopes of fulfilling the dreams they were unable to accomplish.
I wish my teachers knew that their work meant a lot to me.
That their positive and encouraging attitude pushes me to do better.
That we are here for them, just like they've always been there for us.
I wish for us to get through this change together.
Next slide, please. Next slide, please, Victoria. Victoria, could you advance the slide, please? So this is a, you know, that, that audio is a great example of how this historical focus on academic achievement puts a lot of pressure and stress on students. And we're always needing to remember the importance of a well-balanced life. And so we are work on specific strategies to engage, have engaging teaching practices, relevant real-world experiences for students even during conditions of distance learning, and, and helping students to personalize their definition of what it means to be successful now and in their lives. So we see this work as impactful, not only at the secondary level, where we have formal partnerships with Stanford at the middle and high school level, but we see this as, as impacting our values around teaching and learning at TK-12 district-wide. And we're going to continue to adopt those research-based practices to support student wellness, the student engagement, and ultimately to improve learning outcomes for students. So this is our why, and this is our way. And I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Allman, who'll be discussing how Challenge Success has impacted the Gannabeet High School.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me here this evening, and I appreciate the time that you're taking to focus on something that is, in this day and age, a needed positive framework for our students and parent community moving forward. I want to take a little bit of time to acknowledge the space framework and what it means as a byproduct for our students and staff at the high school. But I hope that when I talk about this, that we frame this language and the beliefs in a district-wide format versus just a site-specific format, because we really recognize that the high school is the output of our entire district. And what we're doing there, both as holding organizational values, but in practice, is very important as it relates to student outcomes and life after high school. So I wanted to highlight some of the, the ideas behind the space framework, specifically the first three letters. So student schedule and use of time. How does that align with our organizational beliefs, not only as a school but as a district? Well, first and foremost, for me, as the principal at the high school, it really involves student voice and input and interaction. And one of the reflective practices related to that would have been, unfortunately, before the pandemic, us embarking as a, as a school on our schedule. It was built upon student input. It was built upon research, and it was built upon the idea that we wanted to promote a really well-balanced student that was able to have choice and decision in the, and how they navigate their high school experience. That outcome, while it's not always, I don't think any schedule is perfect for everyone, we maximize the use of time, the balance of schedule, and the opportunity for students to have some flexibility in how they navigated their day-to-day high school life. It's also reflected really honestly in our distance learning mode that we're currently in, based on interactive feedback that we received from our experience for student learning in, in the springtime. And we really repeatedly got information back from students that the online learning environment was overwhelming and difficult to navigate, the amount of classes that students had to navigate in a quote-unquote "regular" school environment. So we took that feedback and built really an innovative and unique model as it related to specifically the two-course trimester model. And that's a steep learning curve for all of us, not only parents and students for navigating, but also staff members to navigate and repurpose year-long coursework into 12-week trimester system. It really challenged us to look at our essential learning outcomes, what those meant, and how we valued them, and how that would look where students improving their outcome in those learning outcomes. So that really is a representative use in the framework for student schedule and use of time. The project and problem-based learning, obviously, we want to get students to think at a deep level and apply real-world scenarios to their learning, which really opens up a lot of opportunity when we have multiple CTE pathways. We have the students being challenged to participate in authentic exploratory research, both in the course that we now offer, but also just in their everyday classes. And that's reflected more so in increased project-based and inquiry-based assignments. Additionally, how we assess students and how we value their mastery and how we calibrate and, and understand that their mastery is being met at each coursework level, especially in this trimester system, has really challenged us to look at how we go about assessing students very differently. And a lot of that is more student-specific activities and student-centered projects that really, that really give them an opportunity to show their mastery in a certain skill or subject, and also apply real, real-world and relevant scenarios to their learning as it relates to the projects and the outcomes that they're providing. Ultimately, you know, we want this not only to be something relatable to our high school students, but we, we really want to expand, and we are on a really good course to have parent education. Our students at all levels really understand the value behind the research and the, the expertise of Challenge Success. And we hope that that continues to trickle down, so to speak, from the high school to the other, the other campuses. And we're really excited to bring Thurston Middle School along on this journey with us. And it has been, anecdotally, it's just been a pleasure to see students, parents, and educators come to these, these Challenge Success conferences with an open mind and really learn about each perspective that people carry into that environment, because it makes us all better for our organization and for, most importantly, for our young adults. So I want to take the time to thank you guys for the opportunity for me to talk about the SPNA in our space framework, and then I'm going to turn it over back to Dr. Keller to finish out climate of care and education for our community.
And thank you, Dr. Allman. So the C stands for climate of care in the space framework. And we have many examples that we try to enhance positive teacher-student relationships. And I know that Soren will be talking about one of those examples in particular. But we're one of the only school districts in, in Orange County and probably one of the only school districts in the, in one of the few school districts in the state that has universal social-emotional learning screening for students, K to 12, where we measure students' strengths and areas of distress, so we can follow up with students and measure program impact. We also have our, another example is a Challenge Success Club, led by Ms. Aronson, our student support specialist, where students work to raise awareness around the student experience. It helps students to learn about healthy coping strategies and expanding the definition of success. And lastly, the E stands for educating the community. And we've had so much incredible support from PTA and School Power and partnering with us to bring in really world-renowned speakers. In 2018, we had Julie Lithcott Haynes, the author of How to Raise an Adult. 2019, we were able to bring in Challenge Success co-founder Dr. Denise Pope to talk about the well-balanced student. And we look forward to, to future opportunities to be able to not only do those high-profile events, but also work to bring all stakeholders on board to, to learn about this important work. So one of the most important aspects of the Challenge Success work is elevating student voice. And I'd like to turn it over to Soren Tippel to discuss his perspective from the student experience. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Dr. Keller, thank you, Dr. Allman. So I, I let out here kind of as simple, as simply as I see it, how Challenge Success works to basically improve our school culture, improve the student, improve the student experience, the teacher experience, administrative experience, and how that works is we, we take some of this space framework that this found says theories, and then we combine that with stakeholder representation, whether it's increasing student voice, whether it's having a, just having a conversation, having a conversation with, between teachers and students, having a conversation that goes beyond us teaching and students. Because when it comes down to it, you know, if we be honest with each other, if we can talk about issues we have, we know about solutions we have, then we can do some pretty amazing things. Dr. Allman talked about the schedule, you know, that was something where we were able to come down and be like, hey, okay, students need more sleep. Students, our gain of sleep is affecting their performance, this is affecting their home situations. How can we do that better? And we, on the massive schedule overall that we had, we were able to squeeze in that and have a later start time. And that's integration, that's bringing this, these ideas combined with stakeholder representation to integrate them into our school culture. And what, once we do that, we can reframe the, the systems that we have in place, and we can reframe the culture of success. One of the founding points of Challenge Success was that so many students were dropping out of very high-quality, high, high caliber schools. And these, and they were asking, why is that happening? And as Dr. Allman was saying, what Challenge Success ultimately is best for is proactive work. So we hope that soon, this program will be not only at high school, but in the middle school, but also elementary schools, because these are, you know, lenses to look through life, lenses to look at how we do school, that are so valuable for, not for students, for parents, and for teachers, that when we combine that, we can be teaching these lessons, these important values to students at a young level, which will help them achieve so much more. So if we go to the next slide, we, we can see, if, could you go to the next slide? Thank you. So here's how the actions that we're taking. So based on these theories, based on the data we've been gathering, as Dr. Keller was just, was talking about, we've taken action. So in the top left here, you can see students talking with parents and teachers in a, in a discussion that we had. And so those, those were little fishbowl, as Challenge Success calls them, where we were talking about serious stuff. And we did skits in, before, where we talked about how the student perspective, it can be so different than, than the parent perspective, perspective on stuff like college applications. And we had some amazing skits done by students where parents and teachers watched. And then we had these really in-depth discussions where parents helped to see things differently, where students saw things differently from the parent and teacher perspective. And from those conversations comes the power of change. And another great, great conversation we had, that Dr. Keller was talking about, was Denise Pope speaking to our parents about Challenge Success in ways that they can help redefine how they, how they talk to their students, how they see success for themselves and for their, for their young students. And then we have the 24-hour time wheel. So this wheel by Challenge, created by Challenge Success, shows how, all the different things that students have. And as, and creating that balance in that, you know, having the balance where they have, where students have free time, where we have time to work on homework, where we have time to do, work on college applications, and where we have time to do sports and all that, is very hard to do, especially for high-achieving students. And we're actually using that wheel with our counselors to help students find what works best for them. You know, maybe for them, it isn't best to do 17 AP classes. You know, maybe they can do one or two AP classes less and have more time and sleep or other healthy things. And then if we look at the bottom here, we can see our Challenge Success team of years prior at the Stanford Challenge Success Conference. And pictured here, we have students with Pepper Warner. We have administration with Dr. Allman and Dr. Keller. We have teachers and Mrs. Honeycutt, and we have parents too. And that's what this is all about, is about bringing all those stakeholder groups together to discuss and find real solutions. And another real step we've taken is, over the summer, we had a virtual professional development on looking at virtual learning from the student perspective. So me and a few other students, we got together and we talked about, we answered some questions that were prepared before, and teachers took part in that. And we had some amazing trends, I'd say transformative experiences, where we got to help teachers see how we saw, you know, being on Zoom for so long, and work with them to find ways that it could work better. And, and as Dr. Allman showed earlier in that video, virtual learning is not real learning, it's not in-person learning. And that has created a lot of consequences that has created a lot of emotion, really, from, from all stakeholders present, who, stakeholders like teachers, who their, their job is to, you know, be around students, they want it, want that so badly. And, you know, administration, you know, that they want to get what's best for students, and even for parents who obviously wants what's best for their kids. And then that leaves us students who, obviously, you know, there's many different viewpoints, but we want to be learning in the best way possible. And, and one way that we try to create those connections are so important for learning, so important for just growing up to be intelligent and socially, emotionally well-balanced students, is forming a mentorship initiative. So this year, we're pioneering a student-teacher mentorship initiative, where a student-teacher will be matched together, and then they'll, you know, have discussions that aren't just in the class, and you know, they'll have discussions about who they are, what they are, their dreams, their hopes. And through that, we hope to really foster the connections. In the short term, you know, the connections have been lost because of COVID. And in the long term, the connections that drive learning, the, the connections that drive inspiration. These are the connections that create, that create, that make students become young adults, and young adults become adults, and really, high-functioning members of society who are successful. And maybe success doesn't mean, you know, getting a high call, going to Berkeley or Stanford. But through, something the mentorship initiative and other Challenge Success approaches, we hope to be able to teach students how to think for themselves and how to want what, what's successful for them, and how to use their, their strengths and build on their weaknesses to find, find their balance, you know, find what, what success is for them. And then we will create, the goal is ultimately to create district-wide change, where we have young students, we have young adults, who have the skills from, you know, academic skills by working to maybe make the, maybe make the, kind of sort of later, the social-emotional skills, and being able to be, you know, very functioning members of society, and to be able to understand themselves better. So on that note, I'll pass it off to Dr. Keller.
You're on mute.
Dr. muted, Dr. Keller.
That's the line of the year, everybody.
Yes.
In closing, our, next slide, please. We are so thankful to the Board of Education and our, and our district leadership for supporting this work. I think it's really impactful and meaningful for students and families and our, and our teacher community. We've left some social media up here that, that, that Challenge Success publishes that just kind of speak to some of the work that they do and some of the, just the philosophy of that work. We share that goal to have students develop to, to the ability to be independent and adaptable and ethical and engage critical thinkers. And so thank you to the students, teachers, parents, and specialists and administrators for their dedication to this important work and to improve the student experience through this Challenge Success partnership. So if you want to find out more information, you can go to challengesuccess.org, or if you're on social media, Twitter, Instagram, I encourage you to follow Challenge Success's frequent and positive messaging around, around positive culture and climate. Those are, that is our presentation for tonight. I'm happy to answer, or our team is happy to answer any questions.
Before we answer any questions from board members, I want to see if there's any public comment on the Challenge Success information item. So Dr. Winston, could you see if anyone raises their hand? Please raise your hand if you would like to make a public comment. There are no hands. Okay, no hands. So board members, I'll close the public comment portion. If you have any questions or comments for Dr. Keller, for Dr. Allman, for Soren, let me know. I will say this, Soren, I went up to a summer program for Challenge Success a few years ago as a board member on our inaugural, and it was really impressive. And being there with other schools that have similar demographics to ours was really connecting and relatable. And I want to make sure people know, this is like a, these are people who are doing all research and education at the Stanford School of Education. This is a high level of research and information on what's best in practice with backup for students and families. So I, I really enjoyed it, and I think it's a great program.
I just want to say thank you for the report, and really appreciative of hearing the student, part of the report. I think we're obviously very fortunate that we were able to bring those top-level speakers into our community. And, but I think that maybe even more important with that is what we've done with it here. And I was really glad to see that it's really being recognized as a significant part of what we can do for students and having the challenge. recognized as a significant part of what we can do for students and having the challenge success club. And I attended one of those meetings where the students did talk with the parents and it was, I think, really eye opening for a lot of parents to hear it from the student of how they perceive things. So thank you.
I wanted to chime in and just thank Luke for articulating really from a student voice what this process has meant for our high school. It's frustrating and exhilarating at the same time to hear a young adult be more articulate and poignant than we all can be as adults in the room. But maybe I'm just speaking for myself. I also wanted to acknowledge the work and commitment that the board and our cabinet has taken with the challenge success approach, because I think when you look at what the program is from the outside looking in, there's probably a million reasons to say, no, we can't take this on right now. But there's a handful of really valuable reasons to say yes to this this participation in this project. And like President Wolf has already mentioned, she was one of the early adopters that was willing to come along and and participate and see really what challenge success was all about, what it stood for. And I was just, I was just excited about the early and innovative research that they were doing in around the frame of education and post-secondary opportunities for our young adults. So I want to acknowledge us as an organization for taking that leap of faith. Because that's a collective decision that our board and cabinet makes. And I I appreciate that because I'm, I feel like I'm benefiting from it a lot at the high school. And our students, most importantly, are. So I want to say thank you to the board and our cabinet.
Thanks, Dr. Allman. It's nice to see you in a square, too. I haven't seen you in a long time. Any other board members have comments or questions?
I I just want to thank all of you. And I agree with Dr. Allman that source and definitely can say things in a way that's more poignant than the rest of us. And I really appreciate that. And I appreciate you encapsulating it. I think when Peggy and I went on that first meeting with Dr. Honeycutt and Dr. Honeycutt and Dr. Keller, I think that was eye opening. And I didn't, I don't think either one of us like how well Peggy's teacher, but how does that actually apply in the classroom and how will affect the students? And to hear you share what you shared really just brought it all home. So I appreciate you taking the time out of your, whatever you could be doing with your time right now to express this to us. It was impactful for me. So thanks for doing it.
Thank you.
And Jason, it's good to see you in a box. Yeah, it's good to see you.
Okay, if there are no other comments, then thank you very much for the presentation. I'm going to move on to our next items. Thanks, Dr. Keller. Thanks, Dr. Allman. Our next item is 14A. And this is approval ratification of independent contractor agreement with the Boys and Girls Club of Laguna Beach to provide transportation services utilizing district vans and buses. Please, this is the public comment portion of this item. Please raise your hand if you would like to comment on this item.
There are no hands raised.
Okay. And then Mr. Dixon, will you share with us any information on this item?
Yes, thank you. We're asking the board to ratify this lease agreement with the Boys and Girls Club of Laguna Beach. As the board knows, we had two athletic brands in our district office parking lot that were not being used. And we're not going to be used for the foreseeable future at this point. So in an effort to be as resourceful as possible, we are able to develop a lease agreement with the Boys and Girls Club to let them lease our vans free of cost to transport our students to their their clubs in mid and south Laguna. So we're asking staff recommending approval of this lease agreement, the vans, it it's already happened, but so that's why it's ratification.
Okay. Can I go ahead and get a motion before we even started a discussion just because?
Don't move.
Thank you. So that's a first with Board Member Vickers and a second with Dr. Kelly. Any discussion questions on this item?
No.
Board Member Perry, go ahead. I see you. Oh, you just muted yourself. Darn it.
Yeah.
There you go.
I'm thrilled that we came up with this creative solution that helps students after school and our partnership with the Boys and Girls Club. So thank you, Jeff, and everybody who figured this out.
Any other board members have questions, comments?
I do want to comment of the appreciation of a demonifying estimate liability in the contract. So thank you. And did it with what Member Perry said.
Yeah, it's great. Great. I do want to comment, we always have a nice partnership with Boys and Girls Club. And I think Dr. Valoria facilitates that with Pam Estes. And we're really grateful for that because it's just another feature that supports all our kids in the community. So it's really nice. I'm going to go ahead and do a roll call vote. I don't see anybody else wanting to comment. So roll call vote, please.
Let's do the student first.
Oh, okay. Soren, your vote?
Yes.
Thanks, Soren.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Clerk Normandin?
Yes.
President Wolf?
Yes, so motion carries five oh. Our next item is 14B. And this is the approval of the positive certification of first interim report 2020, 2021 and budget overview for parents. This is an opportunity for public comment. Please raise your hand if you would like to comment on this item, 14B. I don't see any comment or anybody who wants to comment. Okay, I'll close the public comment. Mr. Dixon, can you please give us some information?
Sure, thank you. Let me make sure you see this. All right, is that everyone seeing that? Okay.
We can see it.
Okay, so this is the the first interim budget report. This is the first adjustment we make to the 2020 and 21 adopted budget. As the board knows, we have our adopted budget before July 1. Every year we do our first interim before the middle of December and then second interim before the middle of March. And this is our first opportunity to make changes to the budget that is adopted for the year. So what I'm going to do is give a high level overview of the the changes that are proposed in first interim and then provide a staff recommendation with positive certification at the end. In terms of our revenue, all was in a positive adjustment with exception of the other local revenue. And that is to be expected. Obviously, our bus pass sales were down for the year as well as our meal sales. Now meal sales, we will eventually be reimbursed, but at this time we're just considering our general fund contribution, the fund 13 to cover those, which is why those are the only ones down in the negative category right now. As far as expenditures, the salary and benefits increase is reflective of the compensation adjustments made for the year as well as the additional full-time equivalents or certificate staff that we added to support the virtual academy. Books and supplies and services and other outgo are obviously much higher and those are direct directly in response to the COVID-19 pandemic in getting our schools ready. And the capital outlays decreased. And that's mostly based on the first first and project at this time. We budgeted and expected more than the actual bids came in. So right now it's tracking lower. When we look at our multi-year projection adjusted in first interim, we have our first year this current year and net change of fund balance of negative 2.6 million. That's a negative adjustment to the general fund. But what I would like to just remind the school board is that that still assumes we maintain all of our reserves in addition to the four and a half million and potential one time for board goals and direct response to the COVID-19 pandemic. So additional purchases we'll need to make. But more importantly, if you look at the amount that's assumed for the contribution to Fund 40, which is our capital improvement program and our facility repair replacement program, those two are $2.1 million. So that's really transferring the money to ourselves. It's just out of general fund as well as the cafeteria fund or fund 13, $500,000, just to cover the cash flow for the year until we get the the state and Fed reimbursements via the CARES Act that was provided. And then, of course, in the out years, it's a positive surplus of almost 300,000 each year.
Sorry, Jeff said that. Those two totals, the 2.1 and the 500 is the 2.6 million. Basically, that we're transferring.
Yeah, so really you can, you can look at that as a zero.
Yeah, that's what.
Those are transfers to ourself.
So, okay, thank you.
Yes. So the components of ending fund balance, and we just touched on this with the one-time expenditures, but our revolving cash stays the same at $50,000. A routine restricted maintenance reserve that is not to be touched and be maintained in our general fund balance of 4% of total expenditures. Potential one time is like I said, a little over four and a half million dollars. And then our reserve for economic uncertainties, which for us is 5% of total expenditures, is at $3.6 million. Based on the changes that we've made, staff is recommending the board certify this first in our budget as positive. And just as a reminder, there are three different types of certifications. There's a positive certification, which is what we have. There's a qualified, which means you may not be able to meet your financial obligation in current year or the next two years. And then a negative, which means you will not be able to make your meet your financial obligations in the current year or next two years. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions the board has for me.
For board members, it would be questions right now before we have a motion to, and this is approval of positive certification of first interim report 2020, 2021 and budget overview for parents. I can go ahead and get a motion and then we can have a discussion if you'd like. Okay, motion. Thank you.
Second.
So Board Member Vickers, Board Member Normandin, thank you. Any discussion questions for Mr. Dixon on the first interim?
Thank you again, Jeff, for all the information and for keeping us positive.
Anyone else? I'm just checking, everybody. I see none. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and do a roll call vote then, please, on this approval.
Thank you. Let me take the student vote.
Oh, gosh. Soren, student vote. I even have it written down. I'm so sorry.
Yes.
Thank you, Soren. Okay, Victoria, thanks.
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Clerk Normandin?
Yes.
President Wolf?
Yes, motion carries five oh. Our next item is 14C. And this is to approve third amendment to increase the independent contractor agreement with Ratan and Tucker LLP. Before we begin this item, I would like to invite Board Member Perry to recuse herself at this time because this agenda item involves Member Perry's appeal of the dismissal of the lawsuit that she has filed against her fellow board members and the superintendent.
Okay. But last time, there was no way for me to know when you guys were done. I'll just check back in in a while. Okay.
Victoria can text you. Victoria, you can text her. And then right now we have public comment on this item. So please raise your hand if you would like to comment on this item, 14C. We do have a comment. Sherry Morgan, you can unmute.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to comment on this item. I find it very curious that you are entertaining the idea of increasing this contract for the third time. It's been stated over and over again that the idea that Member Perry possibly violated a confidentiality was an opinion of a district funded and hired attorney who will benefit from the ongoing litigation that is continuing by this board. Both parties have the opportunity to drop a case. Both parties have the opportunity to agree to mediation. And so far from what I understand, based on this contract continuation, is that this board is not open to the idea of realizing that perhaps an opinion is not something that should be continuing to defend with taxpayer dollars. This is, you know, you have so many other issues that you need to focus on, like opening our schools. While I appreciate everybody's sentiment on how they feel about not having the schools open, it is fair to assume that you all had the opportunity to open sooner than this. Mrs. Member Wolf, you are quoted as saying that the whole reason we have trimesters is so that we can open and that other districts won't be in the same position because they don't have the cohorts. Well, everybody else is open. And so rather than focusing on some things like this lawsuit that is because you have excluded a member's voice. And I have said that I would defend any one of you if the same thing happened to you because you are an elected representative of our community. And all voices need to be respected and all voices need to be represented. So I really think that by continuing to have this go on and to fund it, that you are not, in my opinion, respecting the words of the community, which is please focus on opening our schools. Please focus on the social emotional health of our students. Please focus on what you as fun as paid staff and elected officials can do to help your community rather than focus on something that you are all responsible for. You all had a role in that. It was an opinion. It is not a fact. And so you are continuing to defend a paid attorney's opinion rather than saying you all could agree to mediation. You all could agree to be the ones that will make the change on this board that will take some of the hostility out. Because when it's four to one, where's the hostility? How can one person be the one that's so responsible when the four of you have the opportunity to say, yes, let's mediate? Let's put this aside and let's focus on what we have been elected to do, which is our kids and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other raised hands for public comment on this item? Yes, we do have one more. Candace, you can unmute.
Hi, I just want to say that I've been, I got reverb. I I really appreciate what Sherry Morgan just said. Thank you for standing up for our community and our kids. It's not about all this other stuff. We're not listening about lawsuits right now. We're concerned about our actual children. So I thought this meeting was going to be about our children. But clearly it's not. So maybe we should schedule another special meeting with you guys that takes into the concerns of our community. And what we're here for is the education of our children. I appreciate the moment to speak. Thank you so, so much.
Thank you. Any other hands raised for public comment? Yes, Patty Compton, you can unmute.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for letting me speak. Yeah, I agree with Candace and Sherry. And you know, we're our, our community is in a, is in a crisis right now and our children are not in school. And you know, this, you guys kind of went over this quickly, but this, you know, the change to this more restrictive tier was not unanticipated. It didn't come out of nowhere. We all thought this was going to happen. We all anticipated this. And this is why we were advocating for our children to get back to school earlier. So we would be able to stay in school at this time. And you know, the superintendent of our district hasn't led this district very well. And he hasn't taken any accountability for the fact that we're not in school. You know, I mean, our student board rep, Soren Tippel, like he showed more leadership, empathy and courage than Dr. Valoria did. Like, once he realized that, yes, more could have been done, he immediately took it upon himself as a leader to recognize how, you know, the district failed our students and he apologized. And he did not waste time trying to blame, you know, the board or the Orange County Board of Health. He took responsibility himself and owned up to it. And and our our school superintendent and our board, they don't do that. You guys, you know, you're not like this whole the fact that we're in a crisis right now and you guys aren't addressing it is is really, you know, disconcerting, you know, and today the CDC came out and said the safest place for kids is in school. The safest place for kids is in school and our kids are not in school. We're the also the only high school in South Orange County not in school. We're the only district. Every other district was able to make this happen. Every other district in South Orange County. So the fact that that you guys aren't even talking about this at this night is very, is very upsetting to to me and many, many, many others. I'm speaking for, you know, several parents right now that are concerned that our kids aren't in school and you guys aren't addressing it and and aren't taking any accountability or responsibility for this poor leadership and poor planning that that our district did. And we're the only high school kids that aren't in school in the south, all of South Orange County. Thank you.
Are there any other hands raised?
No, that's it.
Okay, I do want to note that the agenda is posted, was posted on Friday. And so the change, we can't change an agenda of a board meeting without proper notice. I want to make sure people understand that.
Am I right that we did try mediation and?
Okay, we, we can't. Okay, we, we can't discuss that. We can't go there. We have to just do this item. So the, the conversation, the topics were off the topic. So Mr. Dixon, you have to present the item, which is fourteen C.
Sorry, thank you. This is a very minor change to the existing Ratan and Tucker contract. It would be the third amendment. No change to the hourly rates this time. It just extends the contract for one month through August 22nd of 2022. And services rendered would be billed as requested by the district. So there would be no cost incurred without the district asking for their services in this, in this case specifically.
Okay, go ahead and have a motion to approve this item. I'll make a motion to approve this item. Okay. Second, and then now we can have any questions on, and we're just discussing, we're not discussing anything else, but this approval of the third amendment to increase this independent contractor agreement with Ratan and Tucker.
I would like to say, as I have said before, that in running a business and in general, if we did go to mediation, the, the first lawsuit we came about from this, from Member Perry suing us. And that if it is cheaper to settle than to defend, then it, that a business would settle. It would settle. In general, that is the philosophy. So Dee Perry's lawsuit has been dismissed by judge this last time, a special judge, three times. And she is now appealing and wasting taxpayer dollars and all of our time yet again. And we would like nothing more than to focus only on the students and not have to continue to defend the fact that the district's being sued, which is our fiduciary responsibility as members of the board is to defend the district. And so we don't have a choice when we're sued. And so I, I know that comments are that she is the victim here, but she broke the law. She could have apologized for that. And so she wouldn't do it again. She didn't know and moved on, but she didn't. She sued us. So and this is the only time she sued the district. So we don't want to spend time being litigious either. It's not what we volunteer our time for. And we were all shocked and upset by the changes and we've already discussed that. Sorry, I can't go there. Sorry. I'll stop there.
Okay.
Just about this topic.
Okay, any other comments before I do a roll call vote on this item? Okay, so I'm going to go start with Soren, student board rep provisional vote.
Yes.
Thank you. And now roll call vote, Victoria.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Clerk Normandin?
Unfortunately, yes.
President Wolf?
Yes, so motion carries four zero one. All right, I'm still in my final.
You're getting a nod, yes.
Okay.
And I want Member Perry to know that the discussion is done.
Okay, so when she comes back. So our next item, just to give people a heads up, will be fifteen A. If you're following along. Welcome back. We are on item fifteen A. We are about to begin and I'm going to read fifteen A. This is approval of collective bargaining agreement in accordance with AB 1200, chapter 1213 slash 1991, government code 3547.5 and CCR Title V, section 15449 and 2020, 2021 negotiated agreement with Laguna Beach Unified Faculty Association, known as LaBuca. And do we have any public comment? We already have the public hearing earlier. And now this is for an action item of approval. Please raise your hand if you have a public comment on this item and we will bring you into the meeting. There are no hands raised. Okay, so I'll close the public comment portion. Dr. Winston.
Thank you, President Wolf. Staff recommends that the board approve this agreement with LaBuca. It includes the same 1.575% ongoing salary increase that you approved for other units at the last meeting and also includes a 0.75% off schedule for this school year only. And again, we just want to reiterate how appreciative we are of our relationships with our bargaining units and the negotiations process. That's very interest-based.
Thank you very much. We can go ahead and do a motion to approve for discussion if that's what we'd like to do, board members.
So moved.
Second.
Second, thank you. Board Member Vickers and then Board Member Normandin. Any questions or comments regarding this approval for LaBuca?
Just it seems that everyone stayed committed to the interest-based bargaining and working through the delays because normally we would have our yearly bargaining sessions concluded by the end of June. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's a good thing to reiterate to any attendees watching or people who might watch later. These are all resolved by June, but due to COVID this year, these were pushed back. So it isn't, it's an interesting time. It's not normal, but we're kind of a little bit behind for all of our bargaining units and all of our compensation agreements. Any other questions or comments from board members?
Well, and to piggyback that, President Wolf, we only have one Lisa, that's why. Right, but they're late as well. It's because she, she had this as well as so many other things and has yeah, and brought us into our base bargaining, which I think from both of our units have said they really have appreciated as well. Yeah, thank you for all your work, Lisa.
Okay, I'm going to start the votes. I'm going to do the student board rep provisional vote. Soren?
Yes.
Thank you. And Board Member roll call vote, please.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Normandin?
Yes.
President Wolf?
Yes, this carries five oh. We're now on to action item fifteen B. And this is, sorry, glasses. To approve amendment to 2020, 2021 negotiated agreement with the California School Employees Association, known as CSEA. And this Laguna Beach chapter number 131. In accordance with AB 1200, chapter 1213 slash 1991, government code 3547.5 and CCR Title V, section 15449. Any public comment on this item? Please raise your hand. This is the CSEA negotiated agreement. Amended, amended, I should say. There are no hands. Okay, I will close the public comment section of that. Dr. Winston, did you want to add anything else to this item?
Sure, just that staff recommends that the board approve this revised proposal. So we try to maintain parity among all our employee groups. And so this includes the, the addition of the 0.75% off schedule salary payment for this year only for CSEA.
Think that's important, that parity. And may I have a motion, please? Okay, so I got a, Dr. Kelly, and I got a Board Member Vickers and a Normandin. So Victoria, you can pick. Any questions or comments on this amendment, which we already approved the actual agreement at the 1.75, so this is just an addition?
Well, we're bringing it back because of the issue of parity, which we have
Yes.
made very important in our district.
It is. Okay, I see no comments. So I'll do the student board rep provisional vote. Soren, your vote, please.
Yes.
Thank you. And Board, Board Member roll call vote, please.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Clerk Normandin?
Yes.
President Wolf?
Yes, motion carries five oh. We are now on fifteen C. This is, sorry, glasses again. Approve amendment of the 2020, 2021 compensation proposal with non-represented classified and certificated employees in accordance with AB 1200, chapter 1213 slash 1991, government code 3547.5 and CCR Title V, section 15449. If you have a public comment on this item, please raise your hand. I'm opening public comment. I see none. Okay, I'll close the public comment. To Board Member, oh, Dr. Winston, do you have anything to add on this? Sorry.
Well, we just had one
Okay.
person raise their hand. Okay.
Okay. Candace, you can unmute.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm just wondering, again, like, and I'm not trying to stir the pot here, that we're talking about compensation when we're not even in, in school instruction. And I'm just going to say that nicely and politely to you guys. But I have to reiterate the fact that we're talking about items that are so off-base to the parents and the students that are at home waiting to get back to in-school instruction when our primary students are in school. But our secondary students have been sort of, I, I don't, I don't want to use the word discriminated because I think that's too hard of a statement, but they're not in school. So our town has allowed half of the school to go back to school in learning and the other half not to. But again, compensation's being brought up. I just want to like, I just want to kind of put these thoughts into you guys' heads and let that know that that's where a lot of parents and students' heads are at right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other hands before I move on, Dr. Winston?
Yes, we do have one more. Let me. Okay, Roddy, you can go ahead and unmute.
Hi, good evening, everyone. It's good to see my son representing the students here in the school. And I just want to say I'm proud of how he's supported himself and he's joined by some great people there. I, I did want to endorse the comments made previously. Just, this is my first school board attendance. We're an hour and forty-five minutes into it. The issue of the day is how do we get kids back to school? Laguna seems to be the only district not open at the secondary level. So I'm just curious, is this board assembled empowered to make the decision to put these kids back in school?
We, because it's not, you're asking a question I think we cannot answer, but we can have the superintendent address you via email. Because the item right now is our, this contract.
Okay.
As of the Brown Act.
Okay.
And because of the Brown Act, it's not an agendized item and the agenda was created Friday. And so we don't have the power to have, to change the agenda via the Brown Act. So you can certainly get an email from Dr. Valoria, so I will, I will.
Okay, I think it would be helpful for those of us who are not familiar with the Brown Act to get up to speed, obviously. But it just, it seems as though this agenda is conveniently protected in a way where we're avoiding the eight hundred pound elephant in the room. And I think that's probably why some of the earlier callers are a bit frustrated. I think we'd like to know publicly who's responsible for the decisions, where everyone stands and what your logic is, because this is a very important issue for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other hands raised for public comment?
Yes. Sherry Morgan, you should be able to unmute.
Hi, thank you. I would like to thank Mr. Tippel for making the comment and coming online to represent other parents' voices that you all haven't heard. The idea that the agenda cannot be amended because it was made on Friday, I believe, is incorrect. And I believe as you all, you have the ability to amend the contract as you go, just as you can and, and make a pass a motion to add something to the agenda or to then in discussion on a topic, answer some of the questions that the community is asking you. These are very well-respected people. These are people that work very hard. Our staff works very hard. Their contracts have been negotiated. They have been represented fairly and strongly and very confidently by those that represent them with misorder and Sarah Hopper. You are the representatives for the parents. You are the representatives for the community and you are the representatives for the taxpayers in this, in this, in this town. And they are asking you to do something that reflects that authority. And our students' needs are in, our students have very high needs right now that you are ignoring and continuing to hide behind, we can't do this and we can't do that. I think it's a fair question. What can you do? Because you missed the window to open our schools. We are approving contracts for, for payment and things like that and, and salaries. Some of them might be justified. Some of them won't be. But right now you are giving green lights to everything and saying our hands are tied. And that is not true. You have the power to negotiate. You have the power to mediate. You have the power to represent our community and our students. You are elected to represent our children. That is, you are the only elected officials whose primary responsibility is to stand up for our kids. And it is time that you do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other hands raised?
Um, Roddy's hand is raised again, but
He's already done, yeah. Yeah, it's one per person. So you have to do it for a different agenda item. Okay, do we have any more?
No, there are no other hands.
Okay, so I lost track, Victoria. I do not believe we have a motion, correct? And we're on fifteen C.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. So I'll, I'll move to approve this amendment. Okay, so second. Any discussion on this? This is amendment, and again, we've already approved this contract, the C amendment for the 0.75 off contract.
Just to create the parity.
Oh, Dr. Winston, did you already present? I'm so sorry. Okay.
You, you represented it. It's the 0.75 similar to CSEA.
Okay, questions or comments from board members on this item? And again, I want to remind the public watching, these are usually done in June. All of this is resolved at those meetings, but due to COVID and different things happening, these were pushed back. So this is generally not what we cover at a meeting at this time. Okay, I'll go ahead and do the, yeah.
That these are general board meetings where we take care of business, which includes the students. All of this is to support the students. And that I can briefly say that because of the Brown Act, we can't just have discussion with the public. It's board meetings are a meeting where we actually, it's the only time the five of us actually get to talk to each other and, and give direction to staff, to the superintendent. And so this is our only time to do that. And so and you've already made the comment.
It's not just that. One of the parameters of the Brown Act is that we have a published agenda. And so that anyone who's interested in what's on that agenda, sees the published agenda. And they may choose to attend or not attend the meeting based on that. Therefore, if we were to decide the night of the meeting to add an item that's not on the agenda, that becomes a violation of the Brown Act, because then the broader base community there doesn't have that information and who might want to come and address an issue. That's the purpose of it, is so that we are doing our business in the open with a previously published agenda. That's at the heart of it. And this agenda, this topic was a approval of an amended contract. We negotiate our contracts with our bargaining units each and every year. So it's not anything phenomenal and it's not, it doesn't reflect events that took place during a particular year. It reflects the contract we have with our employees.
I also think that part of compensation is supporting our staff and teachers as they embark on this COVID and changes, but doing the business of the district doesn't mean we care less about other things. We care about all of it. The students, the teachers, the staff, the facilities, our services. We care about all of it, but we do have to do the business of the district. That is our obligation and our job.
It is what the five of us
That's why we are here.
nerdly, geekly decided that's, that's what we're going to do is we're going to focus on business.
I'm going to go ahead and do, start the voting unless anybody else has any comments or questions. I don't see any. So for the student board rep provisional vote, please.
Yes.
Thank you, Soren. And now roll call vote for the board members.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Clerk Normandin?
Yes.
President Wolf?
Yes, motion carries five oh. Thank you very much. We're now on to item sixteen A. And this is approval of personnel re-. approval of personnel reimbursement agreement between the Capistrano Unified School District and the Laguna Beach Unified School District to provide orientation and mobility services to LBUSD students for the term of August twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty, to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. I'm going to have Dr. Winston introduce this, and then we'll have public comment.
So this is an annual agreement. It may look familiar. It allows us to access the services of an orientation and mobility specialist to serve our visually impaired students.
Okay, thank you. And is there any public comment on action item sixteen A? Please raise your hand if you have a comment. And public comments are supposed to be about the topic, the action item, because we had a segment earlier about non-agenda items, but please raise your hand.
There are no hands.
Okay, so I'll close the public comment. Are there any board questions on this item? May I have a motion? Okay, I think, Board Member Vickers, Board Member Normandin, thank you. And then any discussion on this? This is a renewal of it. They service our students, which is our goal, is to serve our students.
And, and thank you, Dr. Winston, and for your team, I know, for Irene White and everybody else, for really looking at what the individual students need and, and coming up with ways if it's something we can't offer to support them. We are a small district, so I really appreciate every time you bring these to us.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and start the vote. I don't see any board members need a comment. Stop me if I'm incorrect. Okay. And our board, our student board rep provisional vote, Soren, in the dark black hole that you are in right at this moment?
Yes.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay, thanks, Soren. And then a board member roll call vote, please.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Bickers?
Yes.
Clerk Normandin?
Yes.
President Wolf?
Yes. Motion carries five oh. Our next item is sixteen B. And this is memorandum, sorry, memorandum of understanding and MOU between the Capistrano Unified School District and the Laguna Beach Unified School District for Adult Transition Special Education Services for the term July one, two thousand and twenty, to June thirty, two thousand and twenty-one. I'm going to have Dr. Winston introduce, and then I will have public comment.
So this is another annual agreement that allows us to access Capistrano Unified School District's adult transition program. We currently serve about five to six students in adult transition programs, either in Saddleback Valley or in Capistrano.
Thank you. Are there any public comment? Please raise your hand for adult transition special education services contract we have with Capistrano Unified. Another feature where we're trying to serve our students.
There's no hands.
Okay, I'll close the public comment. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
I'll second. I got that, Victoria. Any questions or comments for Dr. Winston on this one?
I just.
Over the age of eighteen, is that basically?
Yes, it's for students who typically aren't going to earn a high school diploma. They need services beyond up to age twenty-two.
Thank you.
Soren, did you have a question?
No, this is a comment just for those who are attending. I saw, because I know that some of this, some of the wording on here, I didn't know before I read all these ones through it. So what this is, is this an example, as President Wolf was saying, is what this does is this helps those students who are unable, for whatever reason, to complete high school, and we work with this weather district to help them, to help them get through and help them become as, as we want to do in this board, help all students that go through our system, be immunocapable adults in the future. And so this is another example of that. And I think that, I know that a lot of this sounds very like official formality, and a lot of that is legal. But in the end, what all these action items, all this stuff that we're discussing, what it comes down to is these are actions that we're going over as student board representative. And these people here is board representatives of you guys, of parents and students, to make sure that our board is capable of helping students, such as these students who go, who work with for, for adult transition services. So just to make that fully clear.
Thank you, Soren. I'm just, just making sure I had a motion, right? Yes, I did. Yes, sir, and a second. Okay, any other comments? Questions, comments? I see none. Okay, student board rep provisional vote, please.
Yes.
Thank you. And then board roll call vote, please.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Bickers?
Yes.
Clerk Normandin?
Yes.
President Wolf?
Yes, and that is five oh. It passes. We are now on to
C.
Sixteen C. Who's helping me? Thank you. I've got like paper and a computer. I've got it all over, so I apologize. Want to stay on track. This is approval of, approval of contract with Premier Speakers Bureau for presenter fees for Catlin Tucker, I think is how you say it. I'm going to have Dr. Winston introduce, and then we have, we'll have public comment after.
Thank you. So as we were in the process of preparing for secondary reopening for in-person learning, we provided two training sessions to our teachers with Dr. Catlin Tucker. She's an expert in blended learning. The sessions were recorded, and Dr. Tucker provided additional resources, so teachers will be able to go back and review them at their preference. These strategies are also applicable to distance learning instruction.
Okay. Do we have any, oh, we're doing public comment. So any public comment on this item, please raise your hand.
Yes, we have one. Dawn Honeycutt, you can unmute.
I would just like to thank the cabinet for listening to the teachers', our concerns about the hype, teaching in a hybrid model and getting, securing Catlin Tucker. She is tough to get. She is very, very busy. But it was such a valuable professional development workshop, and I gained so much knowledge from it. So I just want to thank you guys for once again, supporting us and listening to us. And two weeks later, we had the speaker. So thank you so much. She was so wonderful, and I learned so much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Are there any other hands raised?
No, there are none.
Okay, I'm going to close the public comment item. So we are on C. Is there, should we go ahead and have a motion to discuss?
So moved.
Okay, I'll second. Discussion, questions, comments from board members?
I am so appreciative of the teachers sharing what it is that they need so that we can support them. And that's just as vital. And, and I know that Ms. Honeycutt is such a part of that, but they all participate in really just asking for what it is they need. Margaret's been an incredible example of that over the years as well. Just, it allows us to have success with our students. So, thank you.
Any other comments from board members? I'm just looking. I see none. Okay, I'm going to do the provisional student board rep vote, please.
Yes.
Thank you. And now the board member roll call vote, please.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Bickers?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Normandin?
Yes.
President Wolf?
Yes. Motion carries five oh. We're on number, excuse me, D, sixteen D. This is approval of memorandum of understanding and MOU between Orange County Superintendent of Schools and Laguna Beach Unified School District for Mental Health Student Services Act, MHSSA partnership, from September first, two thousand and twenty, to August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. I'm going to have Dr. Winston introduce, and then I will have public comment.
Thank you. So this is a new agreement with OCDE as part of Senate Bill twenty-two, which is also called the Mental Health Student Services Act. This act provides funding to expand mental health crisis services. So the goal of the funds are really to establish partnerships between our local educational agencies and county mental health agencies, with the county being the intermediary, that allows us to increase access to mental health services.
Okay, thank you. Right now is your opportunity for public comment on this item. Please raise your hand if you would like to comment.
There are no hands.
Okay, I'll close the public comment. Any board questions, or I can also take a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Board Member Norman and Dr. Kelly for the second. Any questions or comments on this?
Thank you, Dr. Valoria and Dr. Winston, for really expanding our reach in mental health and connecting us to the county as a whole. I know City on the Community Coalition, I get to hear a lot of that work they do in the background, but the fact that this district as a whole is connected to all of that support helps all of our students and families.
Right, and I also wanted to comment that it seems like this, this commitment multi-year will connect more services for students that have been kind of disconnected and disparate kind of services that we don't always connect for our kids as they grow and change. So I'm really appreciative that we're getting more connective tissue in the county on many things, and this is one of them. Anybody else have questions or comments? I see none. Okay, so I'm going to do the student board rep provisional vote, please, Soren.
Yes.
Thank you. And the board member roll call vote.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Bickers? Member Bickers?
She's saying, yeah.
Yes.
She's saying, yeah.
Clerk Normandin?
Yes.
President Wolf?
Yes. Motion carries five oh. We're now down to item eighteen A. And this is approval of October twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty, special board meeting minutes. Dr. Valoria will introduce, and then I will go to public comment.
Yeah, this was a special meeting that one board member wasn't in attendance, so we put it in the action item, so we don't have to pull it off of consent. So it's loaded on separately.
This is, any live public, it said live, of course, you're live people. I'm so sorry. Any public comment, please raise your hand. My brain's not connecting. Apologies, people.
You're just showing that we read the public comment, too.
Yeah, there's a hand.
Yes, we did have one. Sherry, Sherry Morgan, you can unmute.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, headphones have died, so now I'm on my computer. I want to thank you for putting this on the agenda to be approved, because it does demonstrate that you are capable of calling for a special board meeting or an emergency board meeting. So when the agenda was drawn up on Friday for this week's meeting, and the news from the state came down on Monday, I did not see that there was a special meeting or an emergency meeting. So to speak to the point of the, of the previous participants in public comment, while you may not be able to make an adjustment to the Friday's agenda, you could have had a special meeting or an emergency meeting that would demonstrate the sense of urgency to stand up and represent our children. So I appreciate you pointing out, since my previous comment, that all of these things that you've approved since then are for the children. Having the ability and the power to call a special meeting or an emergency meeting, as we know, special meeting needs twenty-four hours notice, and an emergency meeting can be called the same day. When the district, when the state sent down a mandate that we would have to shut our schools, I would have expected in a special meeting or an emergency meeting to have been called, so that you could address that and see how you could further the effort to bring our kids back to campus, as was promised, when we had to agree to the trimester model. So additionally, without, this meeting minutes here is listed as an action item for the public to comment on, but there is no document attached to the agenda item. So how would those people know what those minutes are unless they went in and tried to find them in our system, which we all know is very difficult to do, especially when all of these other things that you really want people to see are attached to the agenda? So the consistencies of what you attach and what you include are not there, but you have demonstrated that you do have the power to come together to represent your community. Thank you.
We have one other public comment.
Sorry, I crashed for a second.
Sorry. Roddy, you can unmute and make your comment.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. I just wanted to, again, second the comments that were just made. I don't know the woman's name. But I was just simply going to say, similarly, I mean, I think the Brown Act is an act that is designed under, and I would argue that it applies in normal circumstances. You know, we clearly have an urgent issue, which is the well-being of not just these children, but this community. And I would argue that the need for the special and emergency meeting, given the news that just came down, would be a requirement of this body, and to not do so would be negligent in the face of the urgency of this issue to this community, the health and the well-being of this community. So I understand there may be reservations as to why we're getting these children back to school. It would be, I think, in the interest of having an urgent or special meeting, would be beneficial to this community to know who is opposing that. And for those who do, I would like to make a very clear point. There is absolutely no public health reason why these children should not be back in school. There are forty million people in the state of California. And the population of children under the, at the age of eighteen or under who have died from the COVID virus is two. One, two. There's absolutely no health risk to them. And the risks were articulated very beautifully in a Laguna Beach Independent piece a few weeks ago that I would endorse and enter into the record. There's a significant amount of health risk, both emotional and in terms of real suicide risk to this community. Teenage suicide is one of the most significant causes of, of death among young kids. And they need each other. They need to be in school. And this body has the very important decision power to get that done. There is no health risk to these children to be in school. None. And there is tremendous risk to their health and well-being by not being in school. And that decision is on this board. That's the end of my comment. I'd like to.
There any other hands raised?
No, and that was just three minutes. I probably didn't hear my alarm. Okay. I have three minutes. Yes, we have, we have one more public comment.
Okay. Anne Morielli, you can unmute.
Can you hear me? I'm not sure if you can hear me or not.
Yes, yes, we can hear you. Sorry, we're all muted.
Okay, it's my bowling night with my in-laws who are ninety years old, and I'm sitting in a bowling alley with a couple hundred people. Eighty percent of them are over sixty, and everybody is having a great time. Very good for people's health and mental health. And for the life of me, I don't understand why you guys can't do your job and get our kids in school. They are dwindling away. They're getting lazier every day. They are getting dejected, depressed. It's disgusting that you guys can sit there and just ignore what's really going on. And some of you have kids at home yourself. I'm sure you're noticing this. I'm sure you're witnessing the, the feelings they're going through. Every district around us is in school. I can't even get my kid into a private school, which I would love to do because of your screwed-up trimester system. So not only have you got us stuck at home, you've got us held hostage in your lame trimester system, which I would love to know who, whose brainchild that was. Nobody else is doing that. I don't even know how it's legal at this point, that you can have us stuck in this system where nobody can transfer in or transfer out. And that'll be the end of my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other hands raised?
Yes. Brooke Tyson, you can unmute.
Yeah, I would just like to reiterate and ditto what was just said. I, this is the first time I've called into a board meeting, and I'm absolutely appalled by the fact that you all are discussing increases and patting each other on the back for getting a few things through when our kids, as the last caller just said, are dwindling away at home. I have a ninth grader, his first year in high school is a complete and utter waste, a waste. And I would like you all to actually think and put the. And I would like you all to actually think and put this on the agenda item, about what your plans are for these kids who have basically lost a year of education, and what this does to their overall school history. Do they all need to be held back a year and repeat it? Because this does not constitute an education at all. Thank you.
Thank you, any other hands raised? And again, we are, this item is to approve minutes from the October 28th special board meeting. No, there's no other hands. Okay, I'm going to close the public comment. May I have a motion, please, and then Board Member Perry was not in attendance, just she will not participate in the vote?
I moved.
Can you give me one second, my system just shut down.
Okay, go ahead.
And and President Wolf, if you'll allow me, the Brown Act does allow for just a quick clarification. So I do want to let all the people listening know that the board can take the CDPH guidance directives and make them more stringent. The board cannot take those guidance and make more lenient. So, you know, given a direction.
Carol, could you explain what that means?
And I'm good, thank you, I just need to know who made the motion.
Yeah, we could take a guideline guidance of like, you have to wear a mask, and we could say, like, it's a certain kind of a mask.
I'm concerned we're going off topic.
We are, sorry.
Can I have you state this at the end of the meeting, maybe as just your statement, because I don't want to. Okay. I can't remember the motion, oh my gosh, okay.
It was a.
You and Jim, Dr. Kelly?
Yes.
Jim first, me second.
Okay. Victoria, then, oh, preliminary vote by our student board rep provisional?
Yes.
Thank you, Sorin, and then a roll call vote for the board members, please.
Member Perry?
Oh, she wasn't there.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Normandin?
Yes.
President Wolf?
Yes, motion carries 4-0-1. Okay, we are on to item number 18B, and this is the appointment of two LBUSD board representatives and one alternate representative to serve on the College and Career Advantage Board. They set up their board earlier than our organizational meeting, which will be in December. And so they need to have this done, Dr. Valoria will introduce, and then I will get public comment after that.
Well, as you introduced, it is a representative, we have two members that sit on that board out of the five. And I believe at the current time, Member Vickers is wrapping up her year as president of that group. So it was Member Vickers, Member Perry as representatives.
I was the alternate, so I will obviously won't be able to do that. Okay, so live, I keep saying live, public comment on this item, see if there are any hands raised. And this is about two board representatives for CCA. Yes, Sherry Morgan, you can unmute.
Thank you, thank you for the opportunity to have so many situations of which it's relevant for the public to have comment. I don't know, I will admit that I do not know what the parameters and requirements are for a board representative other than it says board representative, but I would like to point out, in the previous election, there was only about a 2,000 vote difference between the community that wanted to vote for change on this board and the people that did a partisan vote because of the efforts of Ms. Wolf behind the scenes with the Democratic Party. Therefore, for for you to assign representatives of the board to any type of committee, I think is a poor use of your time, because you have not been given the confidence from this community in an overwhelming amount that shows that you all are even listening to the community and what they're saying. So perhaps rather than sending a representative to represent the the community that that did not vote to support you, maybe we need to approach this from a different perspective, maybe you need to ask parents to participate or teachers to participate. But you have got a vote of no confidence from this community in how you represent us. Thank you.
Are there any other?
The comment shows that there's no understanding of what this board is, and that we would have to drop out of the CCA if we did not provide board representation.
Right, it's not, it's it's a board, it's a school board that's for the, what we consider the ROP or CTE program. And there has to be two members from Laguna Beach Unified and three members from CAPO, and all those people are duly elected by whatever number of votes they got, they are elected. So that's what we're choosing, this isn't a parent. There's only, there's three board members that come from CAPO. Are there any other raised hands for public comment? No. Okay, I'm going to close the public comment portion. This is not really, is, it'll be a motion, so I'm the only one that has to pull off of it because I won't be here. If, can I just be, I'll just be assertive on this, if Board Member Perry and Board Member Vickers want to continue, is that all right with Board Member Dr. Kelly and Carol Normandin?
Yes.
Yes. Is that okay with Board Member Perry and Board Member Vickers?
Yes. Either one of them wants the alternate?
Doctor?
We need an alternate.
And do we have to, do we have to give them alternate now, or can we wait until the new board member to see if they have an interest? I know we have to appoint the board members, I know we have to do that, but do we have to provide alternate now? Or am I, we might legally have to do that, huh?
I think it would be best to at this point, so it would be best to be one of the two of you.
I bet Dr. Kelly wants to do that. I've done it.
I'd be happy to be the alternate.
I think it's good for us to alternate through all of them because we get a better understanding.
Okay, so what?
The motion is to maintain Member Vickers and Member Perry with Dr. Kelly as the alternate.
Correct, so I'll move that.
Second.
Can I second? Any other questions or comments, or everybody's okay with it, give me a nod in your square? Yes, okay, thank you, board member, okay. Just double checking, okay, student board rep provisional vote, please?
Yes.
Okay, and then a board member roll call on this.
I'm sorry, Member President Wolf, my system is giving me real trouble tonight. Who made the motion and who made the second?
I made the motion, Board Member Normandin made the second.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Clerk Normandin?
Yes.
President Wolf?
Yes, motion carries 5-0. You didn't seem super excited, Dr. Kelly, with that, yes. We'll let it pass. We're now on 18C, and this is approval of establishment of the annual organizational meeting. I will have Dr. Valori introduce, and then we will have public comment after.
So as required by Education Code 35143, the board has to select the day and time to conduct its annual organizational meeting. The window is prescribed by law, and so it's within a 15-day period, and we are recommending that you move forward with the recommendation to have that meeting on December.
Seventeen?
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Okay. I can offer any public comment right now, please raise your hand if you'd like to comment on, and this is just ed code, we're just following ed code by doing this. It's already been, that date has been chosen, we're not surprising anybody, but we're following education code. Any public comment?
No.
Okay, I will close the public comment, and then I think we could go ahead and just have a motion.
Some of them.
Okay, so Board Member Normandin, Board Member Vickers, or Dr. Kelly? And student rep provisional vote, please?
Yes.
Thank you, and then Board Member roll call vote, please.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Clerk Normandin?
Yes.
President Wolf?
Yes, motion carries 5-0, thank you very much. We are now on to 18D, and this is authorize the superintendent or designee to negotiate an agreement with education elements. I will have Dr. Valori introduce this, and then I will have public comment after.
So as a result of Resolution 20-16 in support of anti-racist education, we bring forward this as a for board consideration. It relates to a multi-phased approach to conduct an equity audit, an equity roadmap, stakeholder landscape analysis, community engagement plan, and internal and external communications over the several months in the new year. Again, having this conversation facilitated is of vital importance. And because of that, I included both Member Normandin and President Wolf on the interviews for the different groups that potentially could bring forward this work in our district. And this was the group that we were bringing forward for board consideration this time.
Thank you. If you would like to make a public comment regarding this contract with, sorry, education elements, please raise your hand right now, and you can comment. There are no raised hands. Okay, so I'll close the public comment portion. Just to reiterate to the public, only two board members sat in on the interview because only two are allowed because of the Brown Act, otherwise it has to be at a board meeting. So that's why, if you're wondering, it was myself as president and the clerk with me in the interview. May I go ahead and have a motion so we can have a discussion?
Some will.
So so Board Member Vickers and then Dr. Kelly, and discussion or questions on education elements?
Question on the on the fiscal impact, we usually have a an amount or not to exceed amount, and the budget source is a is what?
The budget source would be superintendent. We have carryover funds that we will allocate towards this. And the current not to exceed amount is looking to be in the range of $45,000 or less. And we are simply working on the contract language at this time.
Thank you.
I would just like to state that I was part of the interview process, looking at a couple organizations, and I believe this is imperative that we have facilitators help us with this project. Our Resolution 2016 that we adopted has a lot of actionable items, and I think we need these kind of outside specialists who can understand how to go through this in regards to our student, our teaching staff, auditing what we do. We already resolved to be engage in anti-racist review of our curriculum. We also wanted to look at pedagogy through our courses of study and develop a more robust program. We also want to create a task force, and we want to engage our students, and I feel like this group is really well qualified to do it. I was really impressed with them, and they have, they're all education specialists, their credentials are impressive, and I think it will help us as we hit issues or roadblocks or things that might be more delicate to address in the community. I think having these people would really help us, that's my comment.
I said one more query based on the information. Is that Dr. Linda Perrington at Pepperdine that was principal at Almorel?
Yeah, in the background, you know, I consulted with Dr. Perrington on, as a Pepperdine professor related to the potential for a different group to work with us, which we discussed again with Clerk Norman in and President Wolf. We held a meeting with that group, had a good conversation with them. But education element just had a kind of more robust plan and for roughly the same same cost. So we felt that this was the best group to move forward with.
Thank you.
I would just like to comment to that, even though only two board members were present on the sound.
Sorin, your sound went out. There you go. Try it now, start from the beginning.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. I was just, I don't know where I cut off, but I was highlighting the fact that on 18D, if you expand it, you can see that throughout this process of this very, very delicate subject, as President Wolf said, there will be many stakeholder meetings on this, so all members of the community will have a say and have a voice in how we proceed with this very, very vital matter that affects not only our students, but our community as a whole, and the students that we create for the future. As a senior, I won't be, I won't necessarily be part of the education change, educational changes, but looking on this as a whole, we can see that stuff, that programs like this where they have long-lasting impacts will are really what are really so essential to the younger students that come through our district and the future students that will.
Johanna, did you want to make any comments, just because you're quieter?
No, I totally second what Luke said. I think us implementing this is really important, and now just something to lay groundwork for future students and the younger generation is great. Another example of how the board is in fact doing something for the students. So I was waiting to comment on certain things because I didn't want to add to the, you know, like mix-up of the actual topic. So that's why I was maybe not talking so much, but I second Luke on that totally.
Thanks, Johanna. Any board members have questions or comments? Board Member Perry?
Question. What is the track record with this group on anti-racism work with other districts?
I'm not sure what you mean by track record necessarily, but they have a, if you go onto their website, you'll see a significant amount of work that they've done, they've worked in New York, they're currently doing work in Fresno. They've done work in large districts, they've done some work in Chicago Public Schools area. They have a very large footprint. And during the conversation, it was clear that they have implemented these plans in multiple districts with success and and also brought along other groups as necessary, working with a firm to help conduct the audit of curriculum. They've they've worked with groups in in the New York School District in particular that helped them manage the larger, broader audit of actual, the the whole scope of the curriculum work. So just reviewing, you know, the the long list of districts that have worked with them in this area, I think they're, it speaks for themselves, all the the fact that they have so many different districts that have worked with them over the course of the 10 years that they've been around, so.
I I looked, did look at the website, and I noticed that a lot of their work isn't actually in anti-racism. It's in other things, like in Fulton County, it was to bring up reading scores. It was somebody else with dropout rates, somebody else with behavior issues. And I also looked on the on the comments section, and there aren't very many current comments. There are some good, some not so good, but you know, they said that some users said they didn't really trust them, that they didn't have the big picture, there was kind of a lack of structure. So I appreciate that President Wolf and Member Normandin actually talked to them. So I'm really, would like to hear a little bit more from them, because from looking at the website, I I didn't think it looked like the best fit for our community.
So the area on the website that falls more under this purview was their diversity, equity, and inclusion. If you looked at their services, it wasn't as inclusive as that, they actually do a separate diversity inclusion. And this is a phased-in contract, so if, as they begin and you evaluate their work, I won't be on the board anymore, but I in the interview and in their credentials, I thought they were really trusted, and this is, I think you can say how it's going and how they're working, they're also familiar with our population of people, which I think helps, we need that familiarity. But I, for me, I support them, and I also support the idea of phased in to see how it goes, because this is a long process. This is not just, let's go for eight weeks and change everything in our anti-racist resolution. This is a process about engaging. And so because it can be, it can be something really positive for some people and maybe not as positive for others, I felt like they had a good sense of it, they're all educators, so, and they're all nationwide, so. I don't know if I would always believe comments.
I know, but.
The Amazon book reviews are never.
That's why I'm glad that you guys actually talked to them, that gives me. I do want to point out, though, that the diversity, equity, and inclusion is not the same as anti-racism.
True, it's it's an offshoot of it, yes. Any other comments or questions?
And I, and D, I thought they were hands down better.
Well, can you tell what other groups you looked at?
We looked at the other, I can't remember their names.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember the names. I I thought it was really important to also look at a national level, and the fact that they have consulting. And the fact that they have consulting and working around various areas of kind of, not just education, but sometimes the bleeding edge of things that they've worked on, right? And they were able to implement, I thought that actually was beneficial to this, that they're so ingrained in how to make change within education, right? That the, the professional development pieces and all of that with the teachers would be really well received. That's really where they had me sold. And if I hadn't ever been on the board, I wouldn't have understood that viewpoint, right? From a business stance, it's a very different viewpoint. And so I thought that, that they would be, and that they would involve community at a greater level than other organizations. They really believe in how community and districts fit together. And could give scenarios to us about situations that they dealt with. And so some of them were, were so relatable. And that's what connected me as well. And, and I agree with everything Peggy said about them. So I thought it's hands down a better organization for the, for the best fit for us.
Yeah, they did research on us as well. So I thought that was a really, so they had research on us, what we had done, No Place For Hate, Anti-Defamation League, things like that. And in my comments, I had said that I felt like a really great place to start with our anti-racist resolution was our students. Our student bodies, our, our high school in particular are motivated, they're engaged. And so, and they agreed and their job, the job of whoever facilitates this is to help us figure out ways where we have a barrier to entry or receptivity and go to where we can do digestible things on the anti-racist agenda that I think they understood it more wholly. I just think they, they offer more. And I do think it's a contract that you can review and you can see what they're doing. So.
I really liked that part of it as well.
Yeah.
I do too. I think that's great. And I'm really excited that they want to be more community involved because I think that will make it more successful.
Yeah, they agree. They 100% agree with that position.
Thank you both for having input there.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments from board members? So this is to authorize the superintendent or designate a negotiated agreement. And of course it has to, you know, the details and stuff have to be approved.
Right, I'll come back.
Okay, so student board rep provisional vote?
Yes.
Thank you. And Board Member roll call vote?
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Clerk Normandin?
Yes.
President Wolf?
Yes. Motion carries five O's. We're now on E. And this is approval of amended employment contracts for the deputy superintendent, human resources and instructional services and the assistant superintendent of business services. Dr. Valoria will introduce and then we'll do public comment.
Again, this is similar to the management contracts that were approved earlier and CSEA. These were previously approved at the last meeting. This is simply reflecting the 0.75 one-time off schedule that's included for all employees that were in, working as in October 1st. So that was the agreement and this is what we're bringing forward to reflect for both Mr. Dixon and Dr. Winston's contracts.
I just have to read one thing before we do public comment. This agenda item is also for the approval of, this might be a repeat, but I want to read my script here. The approval of an amendment for executive contracts, Government Code Section 54953, Subdivision C3 requires a full summary of the proposed contracts prior to adoption. Do we have any public comment on this item? Please raise your hand. There is no, no hands raised. Okay, I will close the public comment on this item. Are there any board questions or a motion?
So moved?
Moved. Second.
Second. Okay, so Victoria, you heard we had Board Member Vickers and Board Member Normandin. And any questions or comments? Of course, this is parity again. This is the same increase that has been across to our CSEA, LaBufta. If anybody has any clarifications on that. I see no comments. Okay. So go ahead and do student board rep provisional vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Soren. And Board Member roll call vote on this item, please.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Clerk Normandin?
Yes.
President Wolf?
Yes. Motion carries five O. Our next item is F. And I will be handling this. This is approval of amended employment contract for the superintendent of schools. This agenda item, I'm going to read this and then I will do public comment. This agenda item is also for the approval of an amendment for an executive contract. Government Code Section 54953, Subdivision C3 requires a full summary of the proposed contract prior to adoption. This is an amendment to the contract of the superintendent, Jason Valoria. It was also posted with the board agenda for this meeting. The amendment, if approved, would maintain the current terms and conditions of employment for Jason Valoria with the following exceptions. The term of the contract would be amended to reflect a three-year term of employment, July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2023. The superintendent's minimum annual salary shall be $297,845 for 12 months, 243 days of full-time employment under this agreement, July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2023. In an effort to maintain equity with other certificated and administrative personnel, the superintendent shall receive a salary increase each year of this agreement based on the average or median percentage increase given on the administrative salary schedule. First step and column raise as follows. Step six, 2021, 22, $309,759. Step seven, 2022, 23, $309,759. For the 2020, 2021 school year, the superintendent will also receive a one-time payment of 3/4%, 0.75 of base salary in the amount of $2,233.84 in accordance with the compensation package provided to the classified and certificated management group. Right now, we'll just accept public comment. Please raise your hand if you have a comment. Yes, we have Sheri Morgan. You can unmute.
Thank you. I wanted to make a couple of comments on this. First of all, item 18B, I am aware that that was board representative. I think the point of that was seizing the opportunity to remind you all of the fact that there is a lot of voices out there that are very unhappy what's happening in our district. It's been very obvious between the 350 comments that were submitted over the summer regarding opening. It should be obvious by the many different people whose names you have not heard before that have found their voice and have come forward to address you. As far as this item goes, you mentioned equity and that this contract is a part of the, similar to LaBufta and CSEA, those are union organized groups that have a representative. This is a separate position that is responsible for overseeing everything. Right now, we have 1,600 students that are not in in-person learning. You had the opportunity to authorize that when we gave authority to the superintendent last March for emergency power and that has not been rescinded. Therefore, he does have that authority to have opened our schools prior to November 23rd. But that contract was, but that was not negotiated and therefore our students are now sitting at home. I also would like to point out that there was once a time where the opinion that I brought forward to you was respected because you knew that people spoke to me. You knew they trusted me. You knew that they trusted me with their concerns and their opinions. That was respected until the time that I, until I basically dissented on the calendar. And, you know, according to the ACLU, dissent is patriotic. And the other thing that dissent does, and when you manage dissent, as I wrote in a letter to you all a couple of days ago, that dissent is about recognizing the value of disagreement, discord and the differences that can be a positive position. It promotes divergent thinking, enhances the quality of decision-making and leads to better innovation. The issue here is that you are no longer listening to voices that are dissenting. You are not the, the know-all and all. The superintendent is a new superintendent to this district. And I think the leadership that we've gotten throughout this COVID era is a reflection of the need to have sought a broader scope of input to help him make an excellent decision. There have been board meetings where there were so many back and forths that nobody knew who was in charge. The comments that I'm getting are not repeatable as far as based on the actions of the board, the behavior of the board and how you are treating people that are your constituents. Okay, I don't need to agree with all of you. It's not personal. I've told you that before.
That's three minutes. Okay, thank you. Are there any other hands raised for this item? Yes. Roddy Tople, you can go ahead and unmute.
Thank you. I don't know the name of the woman who just spoke, but I want to second her comments. I, I hear you debating very.
Did he get disconnected by accident? Oh, wait, there he is.
But I guess I'm back on.
You're back on.
To second the speaker before me. Look, you're, you're debating contracts and this meeting has a lot of civility when we're all on Zoom. I move that we suspend any contracts or payments increases from this board going forward. I move that this Zoom meeting be terminated and that the next meeting be an in-person meeting where the, this community can gather and speak to you directly. I think you've, I think you've lost your moral authority in how this has been conducted. And I think this community has a lot to say and you need to listen. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Any other hands raised for public comment? Yeah. You said no? Okay, so I'm closing the public comment. Thank you. Sorry, I'm closing the public comment on this item. Are there any board questions or a motion?
So moved.
Okay, so I have Board Member Normandin and Dr. Kelly. Questions or comments on the contract? And then we, sorry, yeah. Board Member Perry, you need to unmute.
Thank you. Question. Last year was Dr. Valoria given the same as the teachers?
Yes.
And the year before?
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, I would also, I would also like to comment that I know that we have not just a few, but a lot of upset parents. And I believe that, you know, part of this responsibility is the boards, part of it is mine. I'm on the board. And I think we have not really done a great job of providing for our students. And we don't get paid on the board, but if we did, I certainly would not accept a raise because I don't think we deserve it. And I don't think administration does either.
Well, I, I'm going to disagree with that point. I think this administration has worked overtime. And I also believe that we listen to dissent. I think the dissent is upset because it's not going the way they'd hoped and I respect that. It's not going the way I hoped in any way, shape or form. It feels completely, I'd use cuss words right now if I could. It's terrible. But we can't open schools because of the state and county health. We can't have a meeting and change that decision of them. That's, we are a public school. So I'm sorry that people are upset. I think Dr. Valoria is working really hard. Here's where the, the, the push and pull is that frustrates me. We have people get mad that there's emergency decree and he's in charge of too much. So then they pull the other way and say the board should make decisions, which you actually said, Board Member Perry, and we did. So he can't seem to win, but he's working so hard behind the scenes. I know these guys barely slept in June, July and August. They, they're trying to create, this district tried to follow every health protocol, every health protocol. And we have to live within the COVID protocols. For a parent to call and say, I'm out with 50 people having fun, we can't do that as a public school. We can't have a board meeting in person because it's high risk to the people around us. We have to follow the science. And I, I get so frustrated. I believe he does a really good job. And I'm sorry he's not pleasing every constituent. But I actually think it's impossible right now.
Yeah, I think we would be really. I think we need to be really careful that we don't devolve into a discussion of.
The, yes, you're right. I'm just feeling, I'm feeling.
Evaluation session, which is confidential.
Yeah, that's true.
Say that I would remind Member Perry, as I have before, that she has, she can vote as she sees fit. She doesn't need to vote with, you know, a majority.
Right, but you told me that if I don't vote with majority, I need to say why.
Yes, that is good.
The other part of that is not just the COVID and of course, all of us being disappointed about not going back, but a lot of upset about the trimesters.
Okay. Board Member Vickers, thank you for your reminders. That was really good. I'm only going to do board members on this discussion. I'm not going to do student board reps. I just want to make it clear, this is not the area for a student board rep to have an opinion. So in case, just in case. Dr. Kelly, did you have any comments on this? Or you?
As, as a private citizen, I wrote in the Indy how I supported the, the raises for our administrators, our teachers and our staff. As I told you, as a former president of a business college, I believe in bonuses. And if you remember, I wanted to give bonuses last year to everyone because of the exceptional job that they've done. And in, in an industry, they would have got exceptional, more money as a bonus than what has, what, what they're getting this 1.75% plus 0.75%. And so I can't say enough thank you to the teachers, staff and administrators for everything that they've done for this district, particularly in this pandemic time.
Thank you. Board Member Norman, did you have a comment?
I would ditto what Member Kelly just said. And I also, I can disagree with Dr. Valoria and I could tell him I disagree with him. And that's fine. We're still a majority board. We still, I voted against the very thing that we're all talking about, right? And so for the elephant in the room, right? But that doesn't, he doesn't need everyone to agree with him. He needs us. Well, I won't get into evaluations, but our role is to give him constructive feedback and to help him grow as he mentors and grows everyone else on his team, which we could see with Dr. Winston. Like he does that. He does that with everyone. And he also helps all of us grow. And I applaud the work he does. He could be as frustrated with us as we are with him, whatever. And that's part of this because this is unprecedented times. This has never happened in the history of our lifetime. No one here has ever experienced what we're experiencing. No one who's called in has. And it is so fluid and so changing. And I, I wish we could pay everyone more or, or confetti could fall from the sky over every employee of the district right now, or every employee of any teaching district and all of our healthcare workers and everyone else. And they could just feel acknowledged and loved because the only way to get through this is that we all do it together. That is the thing the pandemic is trying to teach us, is we're not independently and isolated. And we have agreed that this is the way we run our district. And all we're doing in this meeting is keeping our integrity and commitment to what we have said we agreed to do. These people have sacrificed things in their own lives to be there for our children. And we said, if you do those things, we do these things. That's what we're doing. And I disrespect, I, well, I'm standing there because I don't want to get into evaluation. So thank you for my space there.
That was well said. Board Member Normandin, well said. Board Member Vickers, did you have anything to add?
Well, this is getting into a little bit off topic. That's. Yeah, I, I've said before that I'm aware of the work that's being done. It, and I'm also aware that. I don't think there's a board around that has listened as much as this board has. We've taken extensive comment and made that happen. At the one meeting, I think I, I know I mentioned this before, we had just under a three-hour meeting and two hours and 15 minutes was public comment. So we are listening. And again, I think that's what you stated, President Wolf, was that if you don't, if it doesn't go the way that you commented on, it doesn't mean that you weren't listened to or heard.
Yeah.
And that there's always all these voices, and then we, we did make this decision. It was, it, it was on the executive order, we asked for all those special meetings and all the meetings to come back to, and we, and we did that. But now we're under a mandated order. I, that needs to be clear. And I know that, I know that our leadership is as frustrated as anyone else, and they also have children in school. Thank you.
Thank you. I was going to go ahead and start the vote. So we'll do student board rep provisional vote, please.
Yes.
And the board member roll call vote, please, Victoria.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Perry?
No.
Clerk Normandin?
She said yes.
She's muted.
Sorry, yes.
President Wolf?
Yes, motion carries for one. Okay, we're on number 19, and this is board member request for information and suggestions for items for future meetings. I'll start with board, Dr. Kelly.
I'm interested in knowing where we're at with providing nursing services to the high school. In particular, I believe that nursing services for high school-aged children is different from what is provided as far as in grade schools. I'm also concerned that only 300 students were tested for COVID out of 1,600. It scares me that people are not understanding how important the testing is. I'm also concerned when I hear one of the people talking about being in a bowling alley with senior citizens and not being concerned about their, their, their family members getting infected. If we don't come to grips with what's happening with this virus, we're never going to be able to open our schools, or we're never going to get our, our economy back where it should be. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Board Member Perry, do you have any requests?
Yes, but I also wanted to give a, give a congratulations to Member Vickers and to Kelly Osborne. And big thank you to you, President Wolf, for your service and for doing a terrific job running these virtual meetings. I know it's not easy. And I would just like more information about this confusion with adding our board agenda came out on Saturday. Couldn't, parents contacted me, and I told them to contact Dr. Valoria, and I guess I didn't understand. I thought you could add something to an agenda if it was that many days ahead. So if it was added on Monday and we weren't having the meeting until Thursday, I thought that was long enough. But, so I'd like, just like a little clarification on that. And also, I know that now you don't read the public comments aloud, and I'm assuming that was probably because of the amount of time it was taking. But more community members would like the comment shared. And since they're public comments, could the public see the emails as well as the board? It would enhance our transparency and let our community have more voice.
I'm going to summarize that maybe in a weekly update, we can have the parliamentary procedure on the agenda shared.
Okay.
And then we've made our public comments doc on our website before. We could do that again. But our, our emails are actually a part of a public records request, I believe. You don't post our, someone emails us. That's a public records request. That's.
But I just mean the comments that people send in, the board meeting, if, those could be available, they are.
They have been before, so that's possible. So maybe a weekly update on that option, Dr. Valoria? Okay. Did I, did I cover everything? Okay. A board member, Vickers?
I don't have a request for a future agenda item. I think it's pretty clear that we have very full agendas and with the business of the district. I would like to say that I'm appreciative of the insights of our student reps. Again, I think that they have been really contributing, and it's, it's a benefit to us to have that student voice. In reflecting that, I would notice that a very astute observation from Joanna that she was reserving comments because she understood that the comment was to be on the agenda item that was stated and not on another topic of the speaker's choosing. And I just, again, it just reminds me that I think that's why we want to listen to our students because they get it. And then tied in with that is there was a recent, there is an ongoing book challenge in Burbank. I don't know if others of you had seen that article. And they have had significant input from students who have some very interesting insights on what they gained from the books that are being challenged. And I just think, again, we are just really appreciative of student voice, and we've been fortunate now to have two student reps. And then the idea that we will increase with contact with students is all to our benefit. So I know that's not a request for information. It's just an observation, but thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Norman, do you have any requests?
I did hear that as a request that the students continue to come to these meetings. Because it's so important now. But I did, to back up to answer Member Kelly and just in a statement, not a, not a request, is that the board can, I don't know if that's me, or, but the board can take a CDPH guidance directive, and we can make it more stringent, right? Like, we can test students or test, we can mandate testing teachers for COVID, something like that. Like, we could do that. But we can't make them more lenient. We can't say no one has to wear masks or stay six feet apart or whatever. So that's what I was where our powers lie is that we can always make things more stringent is what, and normally what our parents ask of us is to have the best options. So, and I believe that Dr. Valoria and all of the teams, all of the employees have worked incredibly hard to take the most stringent guidelines that they have received. So and I did have one other comment. Sorry, let me find it. Wait, no, okay. Oh, another comment I want to make in general is that, kind of piggybacking on other members' comments, is public health directives and guidance, when it's followed by the public, actually serves the public to both remain healthy and to have a healthy economy. When those things are ignored, we end up in situations that they're, that we're in. So that was my only comment. And I don't want to add anything to Dr. Valoria or anyone else's task list right now. And I do want to say again, Peggy, thank you for running such great meetings.
Thank you. Okay, on my closing, I will say, for those of you that don't know, this is my final business meeting as a board member, and has been both rewarding and utterly challenging to do this job. For parents who don't know, this is a volunteer job. I actually have a job. I do that on the side of this. But there's something that's really interesting because for me, it's about public education. It's about students. It's about lifting all the young people in our country and my support of public education. So I have been rewarded by learning so much from fellow board members. I thank you for that. I also want to thank Dr. Keller, Dr. Winston, Jeff Dixon, Mike Conlin, Mike Morrison, and all the district staff that I've worked with over the years. Your commitment to our schools and our students is commendable, and I wish everyone could see how hard you work. I work really closely, particularly this year with Dr. Valoria. He and I don't always agree. We have open debates, but he's excellent, excellent at debating what is important in education and where our priorities lie as a board and with good, strong policy. So I'm grateful for that friendship. And the person I want to thank so much is Victoria. Victoria Weber is the nuts and bolts of these board meetings. She is not only competent and organized and keeps us on task. She is kind. She is funny. And she is so good. I see you, Soren. She is so good at what she does, and I just want to make sure that she knows I am so grateful for her support over these last four years, and this year in particular. This is a year that has been tough. And for those of you that I know you want to get mad at us and yell, but if we could be civilized, we all feel like this is a tough time. But thank you, Dr. Valoria. Thank you, Victoria. Thank you to all the district staff who are nothing but kind and supportive. I've really learned a lot and grown a lot. My skin has not gotten much thicker, so that's probably why it's time for me to go. I'm a sensitive person, and I need to probably go do other things. Soren, what did you have to say before I finish?
I just wanted to say, I was, I just wanted to ask, is it okay if I give like closing, closing statements as well, I suppose? I, I can go after. Okay, I just want to say, first off, thank you, Dr. Valoria. It's been an honor to work closely with you throughout this time, and all of your work, seeing that close up is really amazing. You know, earlier this week, you went through every single agenda item, and it was amazing to see like your knowledge on every single little thing. And we're looking forward to the work that we can do throughout the rest of this year and hopefully beyond that. And also, thank you, President Wolf. It's really, it's also been an honor working with you. And I know you, I know you, I know you forget sometimes to ask for the vote, but it got a lot better this meeting, and it was, it was spot on for after, after that last little bumble. So thank you, everyone. And for everyone attending, just a reminder that, you know, if there's a problem, if you have a problem with the governmental policies, I think that the governor would probably be a better avenue for changing those policies than the board. Thank you.
Thanks, Soren. I did want to say, lastly, that to be really clear to people, the school board and Dr. Valoria cannot open the schools when the CDPH and the county guidelines say we can't. That is a mandate. We cannot. So we can't have an emergency meeting and change the rules. We're not allowed to. Johanna, you have a comment. Go ahead.
Um, I just, I don't know. I don't want to interrupt, but I just.
You can. Yeah, you're good.
Like, with Luke, too. Regarding like school opening situations, I think everyone's voice obviously needs to be heard, and it's valid. And people have their own opinions, and there's two sides to everything. And speaking, I think, as a student representative, I want to speak for what, why I'm even here. I think that as a student, I see maybe it a little bit differently, and I know even amongst the students, there's two different sides to how they feel, and I, I get both sides because I absolutely don't want to be stuck in my room anymore. And I, nobody likes it, and it's just something that we have to do. But when I see that we're in the purple tier again, and I see my mom is a nurse, and she works with the people who are sick with COVID, I don't want to either be asymptomatic and not know, and spread it to my grandparents or people at my school who may be high risk. I don't know what people have or what they could catch and die from, and I don't want to add to that, especially if our community is at risk. And even if you are young and you're healthy, you never know what could happen. And I think saying that the board doesn't care and we're not opening because we don't want to is simply false. We have, this board cannot do anything at this point. And I just want everybody to know that it's not their fault, and that I think Dr. Valoria has been doing a great job. And I know he emailed and tried to get us to go back on Monday, and it obviously didn't work, and that's not anything to do with him. So I just wanted to say that and that I'll, we will all miss you, Peggy. We even, it was great to work with you, and I just wanted to put that out there from a student perspective. So thank you.
Thanks, Johanna. For those of you that don't know, Johanna is good friends with my daughter, so I'm a fan of Johanna. Yes.
The students did it again.
They did. They cap it off. Yes. Yes, I, I did want to, and my closing thing before our next meeting is December 17th, 2020, to state, Dr. Valoria made a statement that's really important to end this meeting with. The board has given direction that we will open in the second trimester. So if at any time Orange County is allowed to open the schools, we will open. We don't need any action. It's already been taken. So I want to make sure people know that, that he's already been instructed to open in second trimester when that can happen. I will need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Second, and student provisional board rep vote?
Yes.
Thanks, Soren. And board member roll call vote?
Member Perry?
I think she said yes. I see it with her mouth.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Clerk Normandin?
Yes.
President Wolf?
Yes, we are adjourned 5:00. Motion carries. Everyone have a great night. Thank you.
Be safe over the holidays.
Yes.